Good afternoon, Marty. I'm just testing my audio. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chair Aunt Taveras. This is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. Looks like we certainly have staff here. And I believe, I'm still admitting a few people. One, two, three, four, five. We have five commissioners at this point.
Okay, and we'll be good to go either way if we don't get any more because we can have the study session without a quorum. So I can hear you good. All right, it is four o'clock, Mr. McNeely. And before you begin the study session, I would like to mention two things. The first one that I would like to say is that we had a new Commissioner, Rob Wilson, that is, this is his first meeting with the Commission this evening. And as Chair and speaking on behalf of the Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson, I would like to welcome you to the Commission and look forward to serving with you. The next thing that I wanted to bring, Mr. McNeely, is under the Community Development Department update. Item number three is the ten-year comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan update. It is indicated that Ms. Shaw is going to be leading a forty-minute presentation and discussion. That will take up approximately half of the study session. So it, I don't know how long the meeting is going to go tonight. We do have a full agenda. It is my hope that we do not have to continue the study session after the meeting. So with that in mind, I would like to ask that we move forward very thoroughly, but being balanced and mindful of the time that we've laid out there. So with that, please, please start, Mr. McNeely.
Yes, thank you for that direction and guidance, Chair Aunt Taveras. Again, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. I will direct you to your study session agenda for today, February twenty-second. First items on your agenda are the public hearing items that are scheduled for next month's public hearing. These would be heard on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth. So first on your study session agenda for public hearing next month would be case number CUP twenty-two dash one oh nine. That is a conditional use permit for a community center to conduct outdoor classes in the G-zone, generally in the Red Lake area. Bob Short of our staff is managing that case and will give you a quick overview so you have some understanding. Bob, go ahead and share your screen and you can give an overview.
Okay, thank you, Jess. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Marty, I'm getting an indication that I'm not able to share my screen. I think I'm not, haven't been made a co-host.
Oh, sorry about that. Let me do that right now for you. Do you see it now?
See. There it goes. All right, thanks.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair again, and welcome Commissioner Wilson. It's great to have you. We can get, quorum is much easier now with you here. We appreciate you being a Commissioner. All right, this is the Mighty Goats Community Center, CUP twenty-two zero one zero nine. And it's basically a request for what we call a community center, just the easiest way to, to define this and it's to conduct outdoor classes for K through twelve students to learn about health, basically. And it's at a goat sanctuary, so that should be fun for kids. They can come out and pet the goats, learn about goats and learn about health at the same time. The use would be for up to twenty-five students and staff. I think actually that's, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five total people. And they'd visit the site no more than two days a week for about two to three hours each, each of those two days. The traffic would not be significantly impacted. It would be a school bus and four or five cars. So these would be, the staff would, I believe a lot of, some students, maybe staff from NAU would, would be part of this. So this is the, the site. It's in Red Lake. You can see the actual Red Lake right there. This is the commercial center right there in part of Red Lake. And this is Espy Road, Hocker Road, so traveling to the site, you would come down State Route sixty-four, make a left-hand turn and come up the, the frontage road on the Grand Canyon Railroad to get to the site. It's a nine-point-two acre site, so it is a pretty good-sized site. This is an arrow photo showing the site. There's an existing home on the property owned by the applicant. And there has been developed in this area barn and, and a septic system. So this would be the area where they would conduct the classes. And you can see that you come down Grand Canyon Railroad, frontage road, and turn left onto East Nighthawk Lane, which is a private street and into the, the property this way. And this is a site plan showing the subject property. There is some parking here for the staff cars. And the applicant has indicated the bus would be able to park in this, this turnaround driveway here. So it'd be easy for them to get in and get out, possibly some staff cars would park here as well. This is my understanding, a newly constructed barn on the property. And it includes a restroom for people that, and are, that are going to these outdoor classes to use. So it's dedicated just for this use. Unfortunately, our EQ Division has said that this would only support ten people, so this applicant may have to start out with just ten and then maybe move to more later. And with that, I'll take any questions for, from the Commission.
Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Short. I'm curious to know if there will be any changes in the number of animals being kept there as a result of this activity?
I am not aware of any changes to it. Now, for this particular site, it is, it's nine-point-two, two, two acres, so that does allow for quite a bit of livestock to be kept here. But I don't think, they, they have not requested to have additional livestock and that would be part of the conditional use for it if they did. And they haven't done that. So for livestock, you get three on the first acre and one on each additional half acre, so you can do the math, but that's quite a few. That's quite a few goats, so I think they're probably okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Short, I am not seeing any other hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, if we could please move to the next case.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next case for next month's public hearing is CUP twenty-three oh five, conditional use permit, conditional use permit for a convenience store with Fuel Islands and an RV park. This is the old Meteor Crater RV Park with, with convenience store and Fuel Islands. It's essentially renewal of, of a historic existing conditional use permit. Zach Schwartz with staff is managing this case, so Zach, thanks for sharing your screen and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I'll try to keep this brief considering the other items on the agenda. But probably you all are familiar with, at the Meteor Craters RV Park, they also have Fuel Islands and a convenience station. So I have two aerials up here off of the Meteor Crater, Crater exit on I forty. And you can see on this aerial that the RV park actually comes off of this commercially zone property and on to the general zone property. And actually parcels within five hundred feet of the exits of the highways are allowed through the CUP to have this sort of use there, even though the general, the general zone typically doesn't allow those, but with the CUP, it is permissible when five hundred feet from the interchange. So this was a use that was permitted in nineteen eighty-eight for seventy-one unit RV park and the fuel pumps and convenience store. And the, the permit actually expired in twenty sixteen, so the applicant is just looking to renew that. It's been there for quite some time and all of the original conditions appear to be met at this point, so I think moving forward, staff would probably recommend no expiration date for this use. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, let's move to the third case, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The third case for public hearing next month is CUP twenty-three zero eight. This is a conditional use permit for permanent, permanent residence in an RV, a recreational vehicle in the RAR agricultural residential one acre minimum zone. This is in the Grand Canyon Junction or Valley area. And Bob is managing this case. I see already has the screen shared, so go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the Guzman RV as a residence case. And in this case, the applicant requests to use an RV as a permanent residence. And they would be utilizing the systems in the RV for water, wastewater and electricity. The applicant would like to put in a wastewater system later if they are able to, according to their narrative. So this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is a one acre. It's, I think it's basically one-point-two-five acre parcel in the valley area between US Highway eighty and sixty-four. So you can see it's one of those AR properties that we're kind of used to at this point. And this is the, the narrow photo showing the subject property on the corner of Concho Road and Lowell Drive. And this is a survey, the site plan based on a survey the applicant has had done, and you can see it's kind of rudimentary, but the trailer is basically in the middle of the property, the RV. And with the driveway that she intends to put in, she hasn't already put it in. She has a, an a hundred-and-twenty-day permit for an RV. It's a temporary use permit to live in an RV, so she is onsite currently. And I haven't received any pictures of the RV or anything, so I'll get those when I go out to the site. And with that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
All right, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, if you would please move us into the Community Development Department update, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So item number one in the Community Development Department update is reminder that we continue to participate in the Route sixty-six Brownfield EPA grant. So just a reminder again to all the Commissioners that if you know of a property or a property owner who would like to participate in this grant, please have them contact Melissa. We do have one of our, one of our hearing applicants who is using, utilizing this grant. Very exciting. It's great to see it get used for, for a, for a great use for the community. Item number two, likewise, our staff continues to support the Flagstaff Regional Plan update in partnership with the City of Flagstaff. Wanted to let you know that the next phase we will be moving into is the scenario planning workshops, and we will keep the Commission informed as to when those workshops are. Item number three that you mentioned earlier, Madam Chair, is an update to really a, a study session for, for the Planning and Zoning Commission on the ten-year comprehensive plan update. So Melissa Shaw, our Long Reach Planner, will now take us into an approximately forty-minute presentation. We're doing great on time, so please, Commissioners, as you, as you think of questions during this presentation, be prepared to ask them. We, we certainly would like your comments on this item. This will be regarding an overview of the scoping workshop that already took place. That would be to set the scope for the update of the comprehensive plan, and we had a couple of Commissioners who participated in the scoping workshop. And by statute, by state statute, we are, we are required to have a public participation plan, P three for short. And those items will be going to the Board Supervisors. The P three is, is required to be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors and essentially have their comments to move forward for us to, to use. The Board of Supervisors work sessions will be on March seventh to get input and then, and then trying to get their consensus on the P three on March twenty-eight, twenty-eight. And with that, if there's no questions from you, Madam Chair, or any other Commissioners, see that Melissa has her screen shared and could go ahead and give you the presentation.
Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, so we'll just go through this presentation, preparing for what we're calling In Vision Twenty Forty-Five to update our twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan. But first, I would just like to take a moment and introduce Laura S. Rao. She is a consultant that we've been fortunate enough to retain to help with this process. So Laura, actually, some of you may remember her. She helped with the two thousand and fifteen plan. And she's back with us, so we're really lucky that she has time and was willing to come back to the county, so. Since we're all virtual and our cameras are off, we'll have to do that at the in-person introduction later on, but I wanted to just mention that right off the bat. So Laura's has been already jumping right in and has helped us put together a lot of this information that you're going to see tonight. So we'll, we'll just start out and just again, just talk again about our current twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan. We are approaching that ten-year mark where we need by statute to get that updated. So it takes a couple of years to do, and that's why we're starting now. Remember, this, this plan wasn't an award-winning plan. It is conservation-based and general vision for the county's vision for the future. It's a roadmap to get there. It's a twenty-year future-looking plan, has goals and policies that guide land use decisions. And it is also, though, a reference for community programs and also public and private sector initiatives that are within the purview of what the county can actually manage. It's essential, as you know, in guiding land use decisions made by the Commissioners and by the Board of Supervisors. And it also has a twenty-four action item implementation plan that is really used by all county departments, and it also has been used to help guide our work plans and our budgets. Just a few more details. As a reminder, it's got eleven chapters, sixty-six goals, three hundred and eighty-six policies. One of the action items in the implementation plan does direct that we identify metrics or indicators. So that's something we'll be talking about a little bit later on. Since it's been adopted, we've had two amendments, but those have both been area plan updates. So there really have not been any text amendments or substantial amendments to change the policies and the plans since it was adopted. So that's a pretty good indication that it's functioning as it was intended. Another detail is that it does not have a future land use map, which, as many of you are aware, other jurisdictions and other places often do in their comprehensive or general plans. Just another way to look at those elements, the, the focus is really on land use and growth, but then there are these other chapters that surround it, and they all work together to create a comprehensive plan for the future of the county. Many of these are required by state statute, obviously land use and growth, circulation, energy, natural environment, the water resources, but some of these are extra elements that the county has chosen to develop and include in the plan. And so just to talk a little bit, that's just an overview of our current plan. And so jumping from that, then, we are preparing to, for this update. And to start, you may remember back in the winter in December, we brought to the Planning Commission and then to the Board, the twenty-twenty-two implementation report. We'll do a really quick over refresher on that as well. And in January of this year, last month, we held two scoping workshops with a wide representative of, of groups to evaluate the twenty, the current comprehensive plan and to help set parameters and bookends for how to update this next, for how this up, next update should function. And so now in February and in March, we are bringing the results of the scoping workshops and the draft, public participation to the Commission, and then to the Board. As Jess mentioned, the Board by state statute needs to approve the public participation plan or the P three for short. And then in the winter of twenty twenty-three, rather this year, going through plan adoption is the entire update process. So between the winter of twenty twenty-three now through twenty twenty-five, there's a lot more in here. This is a very simplified graphic. But that will lead up to the goal to identify, rather to adopt the plan in the winter of twenty twenty-five. And so just to kind of do another overview of what you heard last year about the implementation report. The implementation plan in the comprehensive plan is implemented by county departments, by the zoning ordinance, by the Board and by the Commission. We have reported previously, and in the past reporting years, we've identified that over eighty-six percent of the policies have been addressed in some manner. That doesn't mean that they've all been addressed, but some manner, in some manner, departments throughout the county are, have touched on those in some way. We organized this plan format a little bit differently to organize, to highlight department accomplishments and really the initiatives that are focused on the goals and policies and getting those implemented. We gave some more details on the implementation plan status. And then we've also talked a bit about some initiatives and policies that have already identified metrics for evaluating the progress of the plan. Just a little bit more on that implementation plan. There are twenty-four action items. Four of those major items have been completed, and one of those was adopting the renewable energy ordinance, if you recall. And then thirteen of those are ongoing implementation items or they're underway. And seven have, are yet implementation items, or they're underway, and seven have, are yet to be completed. So this implementation plan was sent to you again in December, and if any of you would like a copy of that, I'm happy to send that back to you. And so just talk, talk a little bit more about measuring progress and what metrics and indicators are. So the programs and initiatives that the county currently runs address goals and policies, and we, we can also measure progress by looking at the action items that are completed. But a more measurable way is to actually look at metrics, and metrics are pretty much just data and figures that measure results. But an indicator then will use metrics and tie, are tied directly into goals that look at how well community is actually working to achieve results to make progress toward our, our values. So we're not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this is just something that this new plan update may try to focus on. Initially, this would just be probably a few indicators. But this is a new direction that the county may, may choose to go, and this was reiterated by the scoping workshop. So just wanted to give you an example. This is by no means a complete list or even a list of what we would actually look to achieve, but they, these are some ideas of what could be used as indicators of progress. For instance, if the county wanted to utilize what is now currently live, the Economic Recovery Dashboard, which some of you may have seen. This is a brand-new tool that's available on the county's Economic Development webpage, and there are different metrics that show things such as housing affordability, wages, cost of living, and actually tracking multiple databases to understand how the county is achieving or doing compared to other cost-of-living indicators. So there are, there's a lot of data available that could then be used to pull in and tie to different goals of the plan. Some other ideas, of course, affordable housing units, median housing price, acres of forest land treated and restored. So there's a whole different wide gamut of what could potentially be used to indicate progress toward achieving our goals. And then just to move on into what we've, you know, done with some of this information, we did hold a series of two scoping workshops in January, and the purpose of those workshops was really to analyze the current comprehensive plan, what's working with the format, with the function, with the process that was used to create it. And then to look at, out of that information, what could we, information could we glean to identify a scoping statement for moving forward with this next update? Again, you know, we, we need to comply with Arizona revised statutes for that readoption timeline. But we also want to make sure the plan reflects the vision, needs and desires for the county's future. So with that in mind, then, what we did is we were able to develop a summary report that came out of those two workshops, and then we also developed a, a scoping statement that you all did receive in your packets, but we'll talk about those a bit more detail now. And so part one of the workshop, we conducted a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenge exercise. And we had thirty-five participants. It was a hybrid meeting, about fifteen participants were there in person. And they went through and did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenge exercise. We had over a hundred comments that were generated, and all of those comments are summarized in the workshop report that you received. And then again, as I said, we took information from that to develop a draft scoping statement for this update. So this is just a summary of the overall comments that we received about the current comprehensive plan and then what to think about going forward in the new update. So there are a lot of positive comments about our current plan, one being that the conservation values are interwoven throughout, another that the land ethic and the guiding principles do reflect a broad and diverse range of perspectives that demonstrates the county's wide level of service provisions. Some of the thoughts about what could be improved in the document was that it lacks integration, both in content and reference and just in the technical use of the document. Following that, that it's a long document, the two hundred and fifty-plus pages are really not written for a general or an easy read. Some of the topics that we heard that would need additional focus is housing and affordability. The group that met felt that this guiding document needs to be designed that it's a more living and flexible plan, that it could actually strategize. The word pivot came up a lot, being able to pivot and look toward critical issues as they arise. For example, during wildfire, those recent wildfire fires and flooding, it diverted a lot of county resources to those issues. And I just want to mention that the current Flagstaff Regional Plan Update is looking at, in the scenario planning process, what's called drivers of change, and a lot of that has to do with what, what is uncertain about our future. And things like wildfires, for instance, we know they're going to occur. We can't always predict when or the total impacts, but it's something that we need to recognize. So I think there's a lot, there are a lot of good lessons learned that, that we can actually use that are coming out of the regional plan process, so the two processes can complement each other. The, the group that was evaluating the workshop group, basically wants, wants to make sure that this plan is county-wide, not focused just on Flagstaff. That's what our regional plan does. Looking at sustainability in all aspects of the plan. A big topic that came up is that we should make sure that we plan within the county's authority. And that to help expand resources that we actually work on developing more partnerships. Again, this is kind of a mixed list, but that the user-friendly, it needs to be a more user-friendly format. It did, again, come up that we need to prioritize those indicators and metrics. We need to achieve better public involvement, and then the question came up, and we'll talk a bit more about this, and we do want your feedback and thoughts on whether or not a future land use map would be a positive and useful addition to this plan. And so then that was part one of the workshop. Part two of the workshop was looking at the actual scoping statement. And so the chart on the right just shows you the basic outline of the scoping statement, and we'll talk about a few of these key points. So the major project deliverables that the scoping statement identified that should come out of the comprehensive plan update is, one, a public participation plan, which you'll see a bit of tonight. And that would include methods to identify current issues, concerns, priorities and questions about future conditions. A project schedule with our target adoption date of twenty twenty-five. We will be updated, providing new and updated data, chapters, maps, graphics, and then if directed, possibly a future land use map. Possibly, we will be looking at developing community indicators that are tied directly to plan, some of the plan goals along with a monitoring and public reporting process. And along with that, the, the group really emphasized that the implementation plan would be better suited to be a prioritized implementation plan, but also than that that be evaluated yearly by a more public process that could then help to set priorities for what should be done in the next year. So a little bit about format as well, and we just already mentioned this, that the, the group would like to see that the chapters are better integrated, and with that, have an opportunity to reduce overlapping goals and policies. That there be enhanced visuals in a more user-friendly format that would include interactive maps that could provide not just a county-wide focus, but it could also then really highlight and give information on individual communities. And we have some good examples to draw from. Format examples from Jackson-Teton County, they're recently updated comprehensive plan, also Missoula County. So these are some plans that we can look at and perhaps take some ideas from. So some more thoughts about the format functionality in the process. How can we simplify the plan to focus on key issues but also address the expansive geography, the needs of diverse communities, and how do we include all residents in this process? And again, as we talked about creating a flexible plan that can pivot toward unexpected critical issues, and then how do we identify indicators? So these are some of the big questions that we will be working to address through this process. And then, as I've already alluded to, process improvement, the, the group that met wanted to see that this be more of a living document, prioritizing the implementation plan, and then we can inform that by an annual implementation review committee to help set those priorities. And then there are some examples of, you know, actually setting some accountability if there's a target missed, missed, and maybe a recourse for, for going back and looking at a better strategy for achieving certain indicators. And then for process improvement, you know, continuing to forge and improve on partnerships to basically stretch our limited resources, because as we know, there are many projects and many, many areas that the county is responsible for, but we, with our limited resources, we can't achieve everything. So developing partnerships is a way to try to accomplish this. We talked about some of the constraints for updating the plan. Obviously, our limited budget is one of those, as well as technical support, as well as technical skill is, is somewhat of a constraint. The large geographic size of the county and the reality of engaging the full range of residents and making it interesting enough for people to participate. And with that, recognizing that the limited technology and internet access in our rural areas is going to be a challenge to make public engagement challenging. So this is a fairly long list of some of the, the topics that came up as far as an initial brainstorming of what are the topics and what should be the focus of this plan. This is by no means complete, but this is an initial start on what we will maybe hear from the rest of the community as we go out and do our outreach, but it is something that we wanted to get an initial idea of what we should be thinking about. So obviously, the diversity of people, places, cultures, as well as the demographic challenges and population shifts, we do know seeing some of the initial projections coming out of the Department of Economic Security at the state. They're, they're the department responsible for issuing the formal population projections, is that the county is actually projected to lose population in the coming years, with the exception of the Flagstaff region. So those kinds of challenges will be something to think about moving into the future. We've talked a lot about affordable and workforce housing as being an important area to focus on. This is a very diverse list here, protection of use from scenic roadways and gateways, and this is by no means in priority, priority order. But then the, there were several comments and a fairly in-depth discussion about different initiatives needing clear direction for where development could occur. For instance, there's some interest in where higher residential density could occur outside of area plans. And then there was actually quite a lot of interest in that future land use map from initiatives such as Economic Development, Forest Industry, working together to try and find appropriate locations to promote and support the forest industry. So that's where a future land use map could be helpful to help identify where the appropriate places are in the county. And then obviously, infrastructure opportunities go along with development as well as livability. There is an interest in how we focus on large-scale impacts and those critical uncertainties, climate change, wildfires and flooding. These are recognized changes that we will be dealing with into the future, and we, that's something that needs to have clear focus. New technologies and land uses are something that are always evolving. Looking at economic vitality, how remote economies can thrive in our, in our community, along with challenges of things like population decline. And then again, we talked about partnering with others to share resource, resources. Part of that is also doing the research to find different grant sources and funding opportunities. And then finally, just to think about outside influences such as things like short-term rentals that we don't really have a lot of authority over, and also water resources, which our authority to regulate is, is rather given to us by the state. So we need to consider those outside influences and be realistic about what the plan can, and can, and cannot accomplish. And so with that, then, that was everything that led into developing now a more detailed public participation plan. And we'll talk a bit about what's in that. There are, we will be engaging with, with our public, with stakeholders, with boards and commissions. Obviously, community members are a big part of this, advisory boards, commissions and decision-makers within the county, as well as our partner agencies and then stakeholders. There's a long list behind these very short bullet points, but I'm not going to get into detail of all those, because that will continue to grow and evolve as the process is initiated. The Public Participation Plan also identifies how the project will be managed and the different phases of the project. The core planning team is made up, will be made up of county staff, and that will be not just community development, but other key members of county staff who will be responsible for gathering the data and basically all the background information that will be needed for the reporting side of the comprehensive plan, because as you know, the comprehensive plan really is founded on a lot of background information and data. So the core planning team will be responsible for managing the process and guiding it throughout the entire process. We are recommending that there be what we call Partner Agency Advisory Group or a PAG, and that's a bit of a takeoff on the PMA Association of Governments, another PAG, but we have an A added to our PAG. And so the Partner Agency Advisory Group would be a hybrid of what was used in the two thousand and fifteen plan update, where there was an inter-agency advisory group and also a science advisory group. So for this go-around, we wanted to basically streamline that process and meeting times a bit, recognizing that this group may splinter off into different subgroups and as, as that's needed. But this would be the group from outside partners, scientists, agencies, who would help us to verify data, verify information, and also look at the draft goals and policies as a reality check for what can and cannot be implemented. And then finally, to round out this project management piece would be the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group or CPAG, and we are looking at this as being a slightly different format from the Comprehensive Plan Committee that was formed in two thousand and fifteen, in that this would be a group that would be invited by the board of supervisors during Phase Two. And this is, would be a group rather than appointed, but it would be invited by the supervisors to basically review the vision, goals and policies once they've been developed. So they would be invited during Phase Phase Two, and we would have them look at the information that was gathered during, by the core planning team and the Partner Agency Advisory Group, structure review maps, goals, policies and the vision. This group, we're also suggesting would be operate under all of the, the normal public meeting rules, but would also then not really need a quorum to get their work done. So again, we, we are looking to take, make good use of people's time and but also make sure that these meetings can run efficiently. So here's some more details about project management and phases. So Phase One is the data collection and analysis with public engagement beginning, and that would begin right now, the winter through the fall of this year. And what we're hoping to achieve in this Phase One would be what we're calling a community assessment report. So this is where we're starting to pull together all the relevant population demographic data, updating our circulation information. There's a whole list of data needs that we will be pulling together into these reports, but we also want to supplement that with some in-depth interviews and focus groups to targeted community leaders, cultural leaders, stakeholders and, and residents across, from across the county that can then really enhance and add to kind of an initial. across, from across the county that can then really enhance and add to kind of an initial, um, list, if you will, of community needs, trends, questions that will help us, will help build on that one list that we've already started. So that we have an idea of when we start to go out into the community of what the specific needs of each community might be. So then we would move into phase two, which would begin in the winter of two thousand twenty-three. Um, and then in phase two is the longest phase because then this would actually be leading up into plan adoption. But phase two is where we really go out into the community and engage in all of those far-flung areas. So we've identified over twenty individual named communities, area plans, as well as our communities that don't have area plans. We don't, we won't be going to twenty different communities, but we will be doing what we can do to try to consolidate geographically and um, do our best to get out to all of those communities so that we, we can really get out there twice for an initial visioning workshop phase, and then for another phase, once we've got the goals and policies drafted. So, um, that will bring us into the plan approval phase in the summer and winter of two thousand twenty-five. And so talk a little bit more about some of the engagement techniques and our communication strategy. Um, we are looking to come up with a unique visual identity. The, the image on the right is really just a placeholder for what we, what we hope we can um, call a logo for this comprehensive plan update or envision twenty forty-five. Uh, for digital engagement, there's a whole list of digital engagement strategies that we can use. We do have a list available now, a, a contact list that you can sign up for to get on for newsletters, um, notices, uh, meeting schedules, things like that. So I can get that out to the commission if you want to start getting on that list. And for digital engagement, that will include everything from looking at so using social media for announcements. We will be creating a project-specific webpage. We will be creating informational videos. We will be able to, um, do online and print surveys. We may create a story map through our GIS system. And then, um, obviously email lists and announcements and radio spots and interviews. So those are some of the digital engagement strategies that we will use. Then there's the, um, traditional print material method. And that would include using, um, advertisements and newspapers, using the report to citizens that goes out quarterly and getting, uh, news spots in there. Developing informational flyers and posters and having those put up in public libraries throughout the county as well as different places and then direct mailings as our budget permits. And then for public outreach and events, we're actually looking at a kickoff event at the county fair. And that would then be a time when we would want to at least have a draft of community assessment reports together. We would create a, um, an interactive game or some sort of, um, activity to draw people in and to become excited about this process. Um, and then we'll be, as I mentioned, going out into the community, uh, for what we've planned, a series of two different workshops where each time we'll be going out, um, into the different geographic areas to get information, um, at critical points in the process, the one being for the, um, visioning, the visioning workshop and, and then also will look to identify community issues. And then the not, the second workshop would be to um, discuss the actual draft of the comprehensive plan. The, um, public participation plan does include the two thousand twenty-three scoping statement. It includes a timeline. And then it also includes a very short list, um, of statutory requirements. And so in the interest of time, I think we're on the last slide. And so what we're hoping, um, we've got some specific questions for the commission. We, we want your comments and questions, but we also would like specific thoughts, if you have any, on a future land use map and whether or not that is something that could be useful for this next update. But then also if you have suggestions for actually stakeholders and community members who you think may be interested in participating in these interviews and focus groups as we get the community assessment reports um, started. So with that, then Chair Antiveros, we are open for your comments and questions. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Uh, excellent presentation, excellent written material in our packet that we got tonight. So good information. Uh, again, thank you. And with that, Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Sharon, and, uh, great presentation. Um, I'll, uh, look around for biologist. I, I worked with the conservation study forum, which has been, uh, pretty sleepy in the last year or so, but, um, we were the scientific advisory group for the last update, and, uh, I think one of the big, uh, challenges here is to get a biologist on board. I think we're probably pretty well represented elsewhere. Um, we have our own, uh, wildlife planner, so that takes care of that side of things. And she has a connection to, uh, Arizona Game and Fish. I, I got to participate in, in the, uh, SWAC process. It was great. It was positive. And, and one of the things that I love about this county and this P and Z process and this plan is that it's so positive. You know, I, I feel like my job as commissioner is to balance positive values. And in today's, uh, politics, that's a great place to be. But, uh, trying to expand my horizons, I read an article about doom loops. And, uh, this article was about, uh, climate change doom loops where the mitigation of climate change becomes so expensive that there isn't money to take care of the causes of climate change, reducing carbon. And so that got me thinking about the county a little bit, and I want to make sure that, that we have no negative loops that we're overlooking. Uh, two issues that I've thought about and which are well represented in, uh, Ms. Shaw's report are wildfire impacts and housing. Um, we spent hundreds of millions of dollars to mitigate uh, wildfire on the east side of the peaks, um, and we've become experts at flood mitigation. Uh, but we're still not very good at, at, uh, thinning the forest. Uh, in the last supervisor update, it comes out quarterly, uh, it said in bold letters, uh, if the real deflag watershed goes up in flames, it's billions of dollars. And so, uh, and the other one is housing. We all understand the issue, but if it turns out that we're running out of land and, uh, we learned in the Donnie Park area plan, Fernwood Timberline area plan, that, that, that area is within ten years of being built out, big surprise to me. And so if we are in a loop where we're going to run out of land and housing is already critical and we're not providing adequate housing for the key folks in our community. I mean, we've got fifteen thousand kids that can, you know, in, in the university that can work at Walmart, but we need the teachers, we need, uh, the healthcare professionals, the police firemen and the county and city employees. And we know what that situation is like because we lived without a planning and zoning manager for a year. I want to make sure what that we're thinking of negative loops and how to pivot to respond to them. And that's not a way that I've thought before. And, uh, so I just want to throw that out there to make sure that when we get to an implementation plan, we're really focusing on what matters the most. Imagine what we could have done with all the energy that went into the flood mitigation, all the county and city departments. Uh, it's just kind of taken over. And, uh, we can't go on that way. We've got to solve that problem because the next go around could be so much worse. If the rear of the flag burns. Um, and the same with housing. If, if we can't supply teachers, uh, and critical personnel, uh, we've got a problem. So I'd like to look at implementation plan a little bit differently than I normally look at things, which is positively. And the third thing is, uh, the plant ecologist position, uh, and uh, that didn't really make it, uh, I've got some, there's, there's some notes at the end of the SWAC strength, weaknesses, opportunities, challenge document. Uh, but I didn't really see that that got into, um, the document at any higher level. We have, and I think I've mentioned this before, we have game and fish taking care of animal ecology over the decades, lots of research. You can have any question answered that you want pretty quick from game and fish about animals. We have tremendous, uh, resources in the county about plants, but we don't have coordination. And I am very involved in invasive weeds. I do a lot of volunteer work different places and, and we see it all the time that we, we, we don't, different people are doing different things, but we don't coordinate in a way that we would, for instance, with wildlife quarters and animals. Uh, we're, we're not necessarily doing the right thing at the right time to keep uh, non-nated plants from taking over. So those are a couple of comments. Overall, I think, uh, we're doing a great job and, uh, in, in the county, it's, uh, it's a pleasure to be here. I, and you know what? A- as far as the, uh, the logo, I love that digital map, uh, picture of the county with the, uh, peaks right in the middle and the Grand Canyon. I don't know how, and maybe it doesn't mean so much to people who are from outside the county, but when I look at that map, uh, it just, uh, makes my heart happy. You know, that's where I love to be and I see it all right there. North Rim, Grand Canyon Peaks. That's a great logo right there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, uh, first, uh, great job, Melissa. You're obviously a planner's planner and into the details. I, uh, am a new guy here, so it's okay for me to ask this question. You're looking to us for some guidance with respect to a future land use map, but we really haven't defined exactly what that is or is not, what it could or could not include. And therefore it's difficult, um, for me at least to, um, provide any feedback to you. So I'm wondering if, um, on the side via email or something, we could be provided some more detail with respect to that particular question.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson and Chair Antiveros would be happy to try and answer that now.
Yeah, please, please do. I was actually going to reach out and ask you to.
Thank you for that. And yes, that is probably one of my, uh, planner pitfalls, assuming that that is a commonly understood term. So thanks for that question. Um, yeah, so a future land use map is pretty much just what it, what it says. It's a land use. It's a map that guides future land use. It's where the county wants to see basically growth directed in the future or how the future vision would be achieved. So you know, again, kind of going back to that, one of that daisy-like graphic that we saw in the beginning, the, um, you know, the, the basis, really the driver of the conference plan is land use and development. And so a future land use map is often, the starting point is often existing zoning, if you will. And that, but it's much simplified because, you know, for instance, we can look at, take our residential zoning categories and condense them into, uh, for instance, rural residential or suburban residential or or higher density residential. So then we can look at and add different layers to it, for instance, like activity centers. I will point out that in the county Belmont, the Belmont area plan has a future land use map. The reason being that that original area plan had one, interestingly enough, when it was first developed in the eighties. Um, and so then that is actually an example, and I didn't put it in here of a future land use map, but it's, it's, it basically takes simpler cat, land use categories and lays them across the county. Obviously it would not apply to the federal land or the tribal land or the park service land or the state land that the county has no jurisdiction over. So there would be, you know, a lot of places on that map you're looking at where there would not be a future land use because those are not governed, not, um, it's not within this county's authority to plan for those areas. So just looking at the sixteen percent of the area within the county that is private land that the county is, does have jurisdiction over. Then just looking to the future, building from existing zoning and then working closely with with the public and property owners, for instance, kind of going back to that example of, you know, is there a suitable location for forest industry processing, for example, that would possibly be near a railroad line or, or near, near highways, but also have access to um, good roads as well as possibly some employment, but it may, there may not be um, current zoning for that. And working with property owners, that could be then identified as a place, for instance, for um, a different type of land use over what the existing zoning is. However, it can also just be a simplified map, uh, based on collapsing, if you will, zoning categories. And then applying, you know, giving different indicators like activity centers that are within all of our area plans, adding parks and different things like that. So it does help developers when they look um, at a map like that because we, we have a zoning map, if you will, um, but it's, um, you know, when you look at it, it really is best understood on the individual or community, community, um, parcel level. Having a future land use map that you could look at at a glance with, um, colored land use categories kind of simplifies that system. I hope that helps. And Jess or any other planner might want to jump in and add to that.
Yeah, Melissa, the one thing, uh, in Sharon's, again, this is Jess with, with community development staff. Um, the one great example that we would provide that we do use and is being updated uh, would be the Flagstaff Regional Plan has a very good land use, um, guide that we use regularly um, on cases that come before you. As a matter of fact, we have cases on the public hearing this evening that fall within the Flagstaff, um, Regional Plan, and we reference the land use guide, um, as one of our plans in our nesting of plans, so to speak, with our comprehensive plan, the Flagstaff Regional Plan and our area plans. Um, we reference that land use guide when we bring things to you. So that's also an example that many of you are familiar with. Um, the Flagstaff Regional Plan's land use guide, which shows land use categories a little broadly, like, um, like Melissa was, was stating. And that is the plan that really did some heavy lifting on analysis on where the activity centers should go. And, and, um, those have been very, um, very helpful to our community. And we use those. We see them used at Belmont. We see them use in Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood. So, uh, just examples of, of how they function and certainly how, uh, how the Flagstaff Regional Plan land use guide functions.
Thanks for that reminder, Jess. And just, um, a further note on that, then, you know, that could be, I mean, we're, obviously the regional plan is, um, a land use map that the county then, you know, would recognize in a broader county land use map, future land use map. Either by a particular color or something else. So there are different ways of creating this.
Um, Commissioner Will, uh, Wilson, I still, I see your hands still raised. Do you have further questions?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, I, I would just like to make sure I am capturing this correctly. Um, Ms. Shaw, what you said, um, what, what I captured from what you said is the combination of the citizens and staff that will form um, the committees that will write the comprehend, new comprehensive plan. If we were to have a future land use map, would also decide where they believe certain things should happen in the future within our county and document that on this map. And then we, as the Planning and Zoning Commission would reference that map when someone wanted to do something to determine whether it was consistent or not with those, um, wishes from the committee and the staff. Is that correct?
Well, ultimately, the comprehensive plan is approved by the board of supervisors. So, um, in developing that, that would be a very public process. And as I mentioned, the future land use maps are often developed right from existing entitlements, existing zoning. developed right from existing entitlements, existing zoning. So there's really not a lot of um changes. I mean, to I mean, there really aren't changes to existing entitlements. We don't have that authority. So you know, that's something, though, that can be referenced um in future decisions primarily for rezonings and subdivisions. Primarily for these these rezonings. A um a decision like a conditional use permit is something that is um a permitted land use with those added conditions. So that's something that the future land use map could be looked at, but that would be more uh applicable to rezonings.
Thank you.
Uh Ms. Shaw, this is Chair Antiveras. Uh if I'm understanding uh your question, you're asking this commission if for guidance and whether we feel a future land use snap would be um important as we move forward in the update, correct?
Chair Antiveras, that's correct. The um this the participants in the scoping workshops did suggest that it could be helpful going forward to help guide decisions.
Okay, let me let me ask you this. You just referenced that when the Belmont area plan, of of course, they have a recent update to their area plan. And you just referenced that they had a land use map from their original uh plan, I believe you said in the nineteen eighties. So as you, like you saw firsthand how a future land use map worked, did you find it helpful in in what was trying to be accomplished by the community and then again, as it was updated and now as that area plan will move forward?
Chair Antiveras, I think from um looking at how Belmont is growing and the number of projects that have come before the commission, um you you recall that there have been several rezonings that have um come through your through your offices. Um that land use map has been very helpful in guiding those decisions because it was carefully looked at by the community and um identified. There was a a regional plan identified activity center. But then tying that those policies to what the community really wanted has helped um the commission and the board to really look at how that future vision could be achieved. For instance, there you I'm sure you know there have been several rezonings from commercial to residential land in Belmont, and that has been guided by that future land use map where the while the zoning was commercial, the community was able to identify that that they wanted to um have more housing, also wanted some neighborhood commercial um in their activity center. So that has helped to um guide the the development of the of these projects. In addition, there were things like trails um for that specific community, we were able to get down to that that granular of a level where there have been some trails identified. And so because those were on that future land use map, then those are actually being built. Those those trails are being built with these different projects. Um I haven't been the planner on all on those specific projects, but if um I know Bob Short has been, he may be able to provide a little bit more illumination as to how helpful that's been. Not to put you on the spot, um. I don't know if Bob's with us right now, but already.
Um uh Ms. Shaw, and I agree. I think we also had uh correct me if I'm wrong, any of staff in one of our recent meetings, we had that rezone in the Parks area. On where we uh were, I believe it was pointed out that, yeah, this is an area that if this kind of zoning is going to take place, this is kind of like, you know, where we'd like to see it. I'm, as a commissioner, I'm sitting here listening to the comments and thinking about this. I'm if I were asked to play the devil's advocate for not having a future land use map, I would be at a loss. I I I would really be at a loss. So I'm I can't find good reasons not to have it. Um that I'm str- I'm speaking strictly for myself on this one, uh not the commission. I I tend to think that it is a very good idea. And again, we do have a case tonight that uh is being guided by the Flagstaff Regional Plan for such a thing. So I have found it helpful in my decision making over the years. Uh again, I would be hard pressed to find to make an argument against it. So I guess if I can't do that, then I guess I would say I am for it. And I will, I'll leave it at that. Uh Commissioner Best, your hands raised.
Thank you. Um. I know that the regional plan has uh land use maps, but really doesn't have area plans. And it seems like it might make the most sense um rather than to try to go out of the area plan uh construct to just every time we do an area plan uh to do a land use map so that maybe it takes ten years to get there. But um it would be a lot of work to put together a land use map in in concert with every area plan. Uh there's also the issue of Prop two oh seven, which is the takings proposition that is very strong. If if we do anything that reduces anybody's, the value of anybody's land, uh we may have um we may find ourselves in a lawsuit and that can be very limiting because generally speaking uh governmental entities like the county, i- if there was even a whiff of that, they back off. And I know that there are uh entities in Arizona that are upholding that Prop two oh seven takings proposition very strongly to go water institute. So that's another issue to think about. But I think uh making it a part of every area plan as they come up, I I I can't think of any area that is very much populated uh that isn't in an area plan. Is that correct? Not actually sure.
Uh Commissioner Best, I there definitely are areas that are um are smaller communities that don't have the size of some of our area plan populations, but the places like Marble Canyon, Remine Cliffs, um up up in Greenhaven, for instance, um those communities do not have area plans. And you know what we're kind of uh referencing here is a county-wide future land use map that would include the area plans, but not be um you know, we wouldn't go into each area plan, for instance, and then amend that. When those area plans came up for an update, then they could reference the larger county land future land use map.
Yeah. It seems like quite a big job. But anyway, uh those are my comments. Thank you. I think in general, in in the regional plan, it's it's very useful to have those those maps. Um I think uh from an ecological point of view, I you can integrate uh biology into them as well, wildlife corridors and plant communities, and that's always a focus of mine so that that would be helpful in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um let's see, I'm looking for any other hands raised. I'm not seeing any. So Ms. Shaw, thank you for that presentation and uh Commissioners, of course, we all know how to get ahold of you if we do have any other questions or comments that we think of later. So for the time being, um why don't we go and move to item number four, Mr. McNeely, under the Community Development Department update, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um and thanks for all that input. I'm seeing that we that it is five ten. So we are doing great on time with your uh with your study session. Um item four here is just a a continued reminder um that we are uh making edits to the lighting code adopted by the City of Flagstaff. Of course, that was directed by the the JLS, the Joint Land Use Study uh with Cam Navajo and the Naval Observatory um plan that was done uh was was to was to get the City of Flagstaff and um and the county on the same uh essentially uh under the under um the exact same regulation. So we are, we are in the process of that. Uh likewise, we are looking at a few other non-substantive zoning ordinance edits. Um we would expect to be bringing some of those to you in a in a study session some point later this spring. Um as you can tell, and and as was alluded to in this last conversation, is on workload and on on uh being um uh ambitious in trying to do a lot of different things. Um this is one of those that is that is important, not urgent uh right now. So um uh won't necessarily, won't necessarily be uh be in front of you next month for sure. Um Any questions on item four, Madam Chair?
I do not have any, and I am not seeing any other hands raised. So go ahead and move to item five, please.
Okay, item five, yet another thing that um that has consumed a little bit of our time, been put on our plate is the standalone county short-term rental ordinance. Um that will be uh before the Board of Supervisors in a public hearing uh next week. Um next Tuesday, February twenty eighth, we received uh quite a few comments from uh members of the community on this item. Those have been forwarded to the board. If you have any questions, you could be um any any of y'all could contact myself or Jay and we could answer your questions on that ordinance. Um any uh anything on the short-term rental ordinance?
Uh Commissioner Bous, go ahead.
Yeah, um I'm just a little confused about why we haven't actually seen it. Um can you send it out or are are we commenting it as private citizens? Normally ordinances come up through us.
Right, that that is that uh that is very good question. So uh Madam Chair and Commissioner Best, um this is a standalone ordinance. Uh the Community Development Department um across numerous, several departments across the county uh kind of um is the is the one who is who is doing the work on this. But the short-term rental ordinance is not a land use regulating document. It does not fall under the purview of the zoning ordinance and therefore does not fall under um the Planning and Zoning Commission's uh input um as as an ordinance. So um a little different than when we when we update, say, the zoning ordinance or the subdivision ordinance, which by state statute are under your purview uh for you all to make decisions or give recommendations to the board on items that fall under under those ordinances. Um the short-term rental ordinance draft and the flyer that we've created for it are at our website. I'd be happy to give anybody the link directly to it. It's been there for um been there for a while now for public input. Um so I could I could direct anyone there. If you'd like to read it, I I could email you a copy uh separately as a PDF if that would be easier for anyone. Um but yeah, that that is not a as a standalone ordinance that doesn't fall under the um under the zoning ordinance and in no way connected to the zoning ordinance and does not regulate land use. Um that is not something that falls under your purview per statute or our own adopted ordinances. Does that make sense, Madam Chair and Commissioner Best?
It it does to me, and if I just go on the county website, I'll see it.
If you went to our homepage, the Community Development Department homepage, um it's right there on the on the front page.
Okay. I'll check it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, and and it may it does make sense to me, and there are no other hands raised, so I'm thinking there's no questions on that. So let's bump to the final item on Community Development Update, please.
Okay, uh as as many of you know, the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan uh is adopted, was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So um we do have an adopted area plan for them. The committee met last month to discuss a possible amendment to that that plan. Um those pro- that proposed amendment is being reviewed by county staff and including uh County Attorney's Office. So we'll provide you um an update about that process uh when when staff has been um is able to do their analysis and and see what it what a a potential way forward would be. Any questions on that one?
Go ahead, Mr. uh Commissioner Best.
Yeah, what's what's the subject of it? Um what's the object of the uh update?
Well, that's that's a pretty long story and would probably go into something that that potentially may come before you and that could potentially come before you in the future. So I think as a study session item, this is just letting you know what's going on in the process. Uh because this is not an item for discussion, for something that could come before you in a public hearing, we really can't go into that.
Okay, now I really want to know. But thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um so Madam Chair, that is it for the department update. Um okay, if I move forward with the Board of Supervisors update?
Yes, please do.
Okay, uh as we mentioned a second ago, um next week, February twenty eighth, the board will hear the short-term rental ordinance on March seventh, the board will conduct a work session on the comprehensive plan update, the scoping workshop results and the and the Public Participation Plan P three that you all just um received a presentation on and gave some valuable in input on this evening. Um on March twenty first, the board is scheduled to hear the Shadow Mountain Village Phase Two Zone Change and Subdivision, as was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh if it jogs your memory, that was the uh that was the townhouse uh phase two of the townhouses, Shadow Mountain Village in the Belmont area. Um and then uh on March twenty eighth, the board will will hear um the comprehensive plan updated uh the comprehensive plan update P three. So they'll give some input on the P three uh on the seventh, and we plan to take it back to them uh for their consensus on the twenty eighth. That is all we have for a board update. Madam Chair or Commissioners, any questions on any of that?
Uh Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing any, so let's go ahead and bump to Commission Staff and Roundtable.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll just kick off with with what we put on your agenda is that we certainly welcome uh Commissioner Rob Wilson. Uh welcome, Rob, and glad to have you. And um a- as we know, we've we've been at serious risk of being able to uh have meetings um for making a quorum. So this is um this is really helping us and um and appreciate you representing the community as a part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh and uh did want to give a reminder, as we gave last month, that Commissioners Williams and Ruggles' terms will expire June thirtieth of this year. So um if you all get a chance to speak with your appointing board members, uh please, please give them a reminder. Um it's been pretty easy for us to to get reappointments on the board's agenda. So if if that's the direction, then that will be easy for staff to achieve. Any questions on those items? And then then, of course, uh going to the uh to the commission, Madam Chair, on this roundtable.
Okay, I am uh Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. I um would like to um thank Supervisor Vasquez for his confidence in my ability and appointment to this commission. Um I look very forward to working with a a really well um working commission with lots of information and knowledge that I'm going to have to catch up on. Um I would also like to thank um the staff and um Chair for helping with the onboarding process that I've been going through, trying to make sure I'll be up to speed as quickly as possible um and be a a participating and and um beneficial member of this commission. Um and in that note, I would like to um start by asking or or making a suggestion that um staff investigate the availability of alternative sites to have onsite meetings um in-person meetings uh someplace like city council chambers or others. Um since there appears to be a a long delay that's going to occur before the county facilities will be available again. Um and with that, I just like to say thank you to everybody.
Uh thank you, Commissioner William Wilson, and uh just to reiterate my comments, we also look very much forward to working with you. Uh the, just to kind of piggyback on your comment uh regarding the in-person hearings, I'm going to ask uh Director Christelman or Mr. McNeely, do you know why this commission is not having in-person hearings?
So Madam Chair, I'll go first. I'm, I'm pretty sure, hold on, let me look at our, our participant list. I'm pretty sure we've got Jay with us here. We are certainly following suit at this point in time with the Board of Supervisors, all of you, but, but Commissioner Wilson would remember that you traditionally met at, in the Board of Supervisors chambers at the board, at the county admin building downtown. Those chambers are being renovated to have the ability to do what we are calling hybrid meetings that we can hold meetings in person, but people could attend, literally attend them remotely as well via screens in the room and cameras, microphones and speakers and having all that work. We've seen it work, we've experienced it. We don't have that set up in the board chambers yet. When I've checked with Parks and Rec Department, their commission is still meeting virtually as well. Obviously, the board is continuing to meet virtually. I am not aware at this point, but I haven't done a comprehensive survey of, of any other appointed commissions or groups within the, the county organization that, that is meeting in person at this point in time. And, and with that, if Jay's with us, I'm sure he could give some, give some perspective as well from, kind of from the senior county management perspective.
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Jay here. Thanks, Jess. I don't have a whole lot more to add. They are going out to RFP, the county's facilities department. They're going to completely redo those chambers, including filling the floor in. And I mean, there's, there's a pretty significant project that's going to be going underway. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, and this is Chair Ontiveris, and I do, I, I do actually appreciate the update that you gave us that it, it appears in Coconino County that there are, that no one's meeting in person. That's from the top at the Board of Supervisors, Parks and Rec, other, other hearings. But the one thing that I, I didn't hear in the analysis was why? Does anyone have an answer to the why? Because this does mark three years since this commission has met in person where the public have not had an opportunity to come in public and, you know, present, see faces, et cetera. Does anyone, does anyone have the why? And then followed on that, would it be possible if the board chambers are going to be going, undergoing a lengthy remodel? Is there another location that could be utilized during that time while the remodels are being done?
Hi, Madam Chair, it's Jay. I, I, I don't have an answer as far as why is concerned. It's just the decision that our board has made. But yeah, we could certainly look at other venues if, if the commission is interested in, in hosting, you know, in-person meetings.
You know, why don't? We are running out of time. It's 5:25 right now. I would like to take, not knowing how long this meeting is going to be going this evening, I would like to take a short break before we begin the hearing. So regarding that subject on Mr. Christelman, Mr. McNeely, if you could maybe help the commission understand why everything in Coconino County is still being held virtually when, when literally the rest of the world has moved on from that. Arizona held the Super Bowl a couple of weekends ago. I'm, I just am not aware, the only thing that I'm really aware of is Coconino County not having public hearings. I'm sure there's something else going on, but it is Coconino County. And I have also been asked that question by members of the community, and I'm at a lack for an answer. And so if nothing else, could you guys maybe ask someone who would hold the answer to this question and come back and give us some, a little more additional information at the next meeting so we could better understand and maybe get a feel, I'd like to also get a feel for how the other commissioners feel about this. But at this time, why don't we leave it there for now? Because like I said, I do want to take a short break, not knowing how long this meeting may be going. So with that, is there anything else really, really pressing that needs to come up at Commission Roundtable? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. My clock shows 5:27. Let's take a three-minute break and we'll start the public hearing promptly at 5:30.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Ontiveris. Is staff ready to go?
Madam Chair, yes, this is Jess with Community Development Staff, and staff is ready. So we are ready to pick off your public hearing agenda.
All right, it is 5:30 PM, and I am going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2023 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interests of public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, do not use the comment function for discussions. It is for communicating with staff if you are having a problem connecting. With that, thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would please stand, Mr. McNeely, please lead us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the January 25th, 2023 minutes. If there are no changes, modifications, or corrections, I will accept a motion for approval in a second, please.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from January 25th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Clifford to approve the January 25th, 2023 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'm going to abstain.
This is Vice Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The first item on the public hearing agenda this evening is case number CUP 21-084.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. CUP 21-084 is a request for a conditional use permit for a hospital health clinic on a 30.21 acre parcel in the general zone. The subject property is located at 1392 Moki Drive in the Blue Ridge area. The property owner is Lisa Gibbs, and the applicant's representative is Tevis Reich. The applicant requests a continuance for this case until a special use permit is obtained for access from the U.S. Forest Service. And once that is obtained, staff will renotice the case for the next corresponding hearing date.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for that. The applicant has requested a continuance for this case this evening. So with that, I will take a motion in a second from the commissioners to move forward with that, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to continue. Case CUP 21-084 indefinitely, as is stated in the analysis by staff, until such date as the applicant has the permit from the Forest Service to utilize the access off of the highway to their site.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion for an indefinite, excuse me, indefinite continuance for CUP 21-084 to allow the applicant time to obtain a Forest Service special use permit. I have a second for that by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is CUP 22-101.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob Short is managing this conditional use permit request. I see he already has his screen shared. So Bob, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, are you able to hear me and see my screen?
Yep.
Yes, we sure can. Go ahead.
Thank you. This case is the Conifal RV as a residence at CUP 22-101. And in this case, the proposal is to install to install an RV on the subject property. Solar's proposed for electricity. The applicant requests hauled water and, or would, would haul the water, and they've already been issued a wastewater permit. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is located in Grand Canyon Junction, also known as Valley. And as you can see, it's like right off the Highway 180 right there in that location. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. It's on the corner of Dewey Drive and East Vernon Road. And this is a site plan showing the subject property. The tiny home would be located here, and this would be the wastewater system. And I believe I've actually moved back to the wrong, I'm showing the, the wrong slideshow. This was the one for the study session, I believe. Let me look back and see. Yeah, apologize for that. One second, and I'll pull up the correct one. And here we go. Apologize for that. Okay, so in this case, the application, it is important that I, that I introduce the applicant and the application. So the owner is Jamie Corso of Meth, Metholot, Methlodion, Texas. The applicant is Thomas Conifal of Northville, New York. And the location of the property is at 1522 East Vernon Road in Grand Canyon Junction. The zoning is AR1, parcel size is 1.25 acres, and the use is an RV as a residence. And this is again the vicinity map that I showed before. And this is the aerial photo. And the applicant proposes to use solar panels for electricity. Septic system's already been installed on the property for wastewater, and they already have it. They actually have a water tank for use for potable water, and that would be hauled to the site. And this is the site plan. Again, you can see the tiny home located here. This is the septic system already installed. You can see the water tank, and this is a pad for future use, and that would be the solar panels. This is a photo of the proposed RV. It has been, it, it is being stored on the site at this time. The applicant is not living in it. So that is a loud bar code. This is the actual site and a photo of the proposed RV. It is a park model RV. In terms of citizen participation, properties within 300 feet of the property were notified. There was a meeting on December 20th, 2022. One applicant reported and, and commented on this application, and that was to express a concern the RV would be used to home, to house homeless people. The applicant indicated it would only be used for personal uses. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, stack, staff recommends approval of CUP 22-0101 with the recommended conditions. If that'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, this is Chair Auntie Veris. I am not seeing any hands raised or any unmutes. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, I would like to ask the applicant if she has received the staff report and agrees with the conditions. Mr. Short, oh, okay, okay, please go ahead. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Jamie Corso, and this is for fifteen twenty-two East Vernon Road, or my address now, sorry, where I live.
Yeah, give us a current address. We've got to have it for the record.
It's seventy forty-one Montgomery Road, and that's in Midlothian, Texas.
Okay, and I was correct in understanding that you have received the staff report, and you do agree with the conditions that are written in it?
Yeah.
Alrighty, let me see if any of the Commissioners have any questions for you. I am not seeing any. So with that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand and unmute, and I will call on you. And not seeing any, I'm going to close it to the public and open it at discussion level. Vice Chair Burton, would you please start this evening?
Yeah, I don't have any comments. I'm happy they're doing this the proper way, and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Ruggles? Commissioner Ruggles, you're muted. There you go. Yeah.
There we go. Okay, I have no other, no comments, other than the fact that I can make findings for this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I also can make the findings, and I think it looks like a nice little house.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford.
I can make the findings. They're doing it right. They're coming to us for the CUP, and they're doing the wastewater and everything that's already in place. Doing it better than most of them out there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best?
I concur with my fellow Commissioners, and I can make the finding.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
New guy question again here. I apologize. In the conditions of approval recommended by staff, one of them is that all required permits be obtained by Environmental Quality and Building Division, including permits for water, wastewater, and electrical connections as required. I'm wondering what the value of adding that as a condition in of approval in here is, since all of those are required by code, and there doesn't seem, and it seems like we're saying, and oh, by the way, you have to follow the law.
Commissioner, Mr. McNeely, could you address that for Commissioner Wilson at this time, please? So, because I want everyone to understand why we're doing what we're doing.
Absolutely. So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Wilson, I'm happy to, I'm happy to comment on that. In this case, Commissioner Wilson is absolutely correct. The applicant has chosen to do an onsite wastewater system. And, and therefore, and has already gone through the environmental quality permitting process. It would be possible, and some RVs that you have seen come for you for conditional use permit to be lived in permanently will use some, some other alternative method of, of removing their wastewater that does not include an onsite wastewater system. So in this case, it is redundant. It's become common on many of these conditional use permits to redundantly put in the, in the conditions, probably to put the applicant on notice. In this case, the applicant's ahead of the game. Generally speaking, most of the applications we see, the applicant has not yet moved a unit to the site and, and has not yet done any site improvements. So it's often letting the applicant be on notice of, of, of what they are required to do here in the public hearing, even though it is required, as Commissioner Wilson stated by ordinance anyways. And it's letting possibly the surrounding property owners know if they have concerns. It's kind of reiterating redundantly that, that there are codes and that those, those codes are required to be followed. So we, we as staff certainly can see, see both sides of that coin. And we've, on some of these applications, we've come up with some pretty standardized conditions that we're used to seeing on applications such as this. We are happy to modify those, make them, make them possibly more efficient in the future if, if that's the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any, any questions that I can clarify on that?
Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything further?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McNeely. That helps with that question. The, the second, or the third condition says noise generated in the site shall not exceed fifty dB A at the property line. Is that also a standard throughout the county that noise levels must be less than fifty dB at a property line for any residential property?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Wilson, very good question. In the case of RV as a residence, no. The, the zoning ordinance does not, I'd have to, I'd have to check, but I am, I am ninety-nine percent sure that the zoning ordinance doesn't codify for that use, the fifty dB at the property line. We did get that into the code, for instance, for campgrounds when they are permitted with a CUP in the G-zone. So in the case of RVs, many of these will, many if not most of, of these will require a backup generator for their power. And we all know that a backup generator could, could generate noise that could be offensive to neighbors, which is why this condition goes in there. So, you know, in the, in the few and far between case, cases where an RV would have direct APS available, that would be a non-issue. And, and staff probably wouldn't recommend that condition. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. McNeely. And with that, Commissioner Wilson, do you, we're at commission discussion right now. We'll be moving to, you know, it looks like most likely a motion to approve. Do you have any, any other comments or thoughts on this particular case this evening before we go further?
Not on this case, no ma'am.
Okay, this is Chair Auntie Veris. I also agree with the other comments given by the Commissioners this evening. I can make the findings of fact required to approve this. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve CUP twenty-two dash one-on-one, as with the conditions as stated.
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by, I think it was Commissioner Williams, and for approval of CUP twenty-two dash one-zero-one, all in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair Auntie Veris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The third item on the public hearing agenda this evening is CUP two-three-dash-zero-zero-one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. And this is CUP twenty-three zero-zero-one. The owner and applicant of the property is Jeff and Brittany Lehman. The property is located at sixty-nine twenty-five Willow Pete Drive in the Doni Park area. Zoning is AR-two-and-a-half, that's agricultural residential, with a two-and-a-half acre parcel size minimum. And this property is two-point-six acres in size. This request is for a conditional use permit for what we're calling a community center. The definition in our zoning ordinance for a community center is a meeting place used by members of a community for social, cultural, or recreational purposes. As far as the subject property, it's developed with an existing home, has an attached garage, and an existing fifteen-hundred-square-foot RV garage. And the surrounding land uses include single-family dwellings in the AR-two-and-a-half zone. Across from Coach Field Road is Summit Fire and Peaks View Park, as well as Cromer Elementary. And here's a vicinity map, so this is the subject property. All of the other surrounding properties are developed with single-family residences. Here's Peaks View Park and Summit Fire and Cromer here. Here's a site plan of the subject properties. So up on the top, you can see, this is where the community center use would be. And then we have the existing residence with attached garage here. Here's Willow Pete Road in the bottom. For some background on this use and some details on this use, the applicants actually run an educational community center use where they have classes for a maximum of twenty young children and/or teens. They hold these classes one or two Saturdays per month from ten AM to two PM. And they teach kids lessons about woodworking, small engine repair, household wiring, et cetera, handy type skills. The tools that they use in the RV garage would include things like drill presses, saws, hammers, and small lathes, et cetera. Some of you on the Commission in twenty-nineteen will remember that this case was approved in twenty-nineteen. And at that time, Commissioner Ruggles will especially remember that we looked into how many decibels would occur at the neighboring residences. And considering the ambient noise of Coach Field Road, the noise impact is negligible. But in any case, the conditional use permit was approved in twenty-nineteen. It did expire, I believe it was about six months ago. And so this case is coming back before you through a hearing, rather than it being administratively approved because it did expire. As far, as far as long-range plan conformance, there are five policies of the comprehensive plan that support an educational type use such as this. And there are two policies in the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood area that also support this sort of community use, so long as impacts are mitigated. So staff finds that this use permit application is consistent with the long-range plans that are applicable. And this slide, I guess, is just going over basically that with only two Saturdays per month and limited amount of students, there shouldn't be any traffic issues. I did go over the noise level issue, which shouldn't be a concern. So staff does support a new approval of this use. There are four findings of fact that need to be made by the Commission in order to approve the case. I believe I've gone over those in the staff report, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to go over those in detail. Staff does find, is able to make all of those findings and does make, recommend approval of CUP twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-one subject to the conditions of the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
This is Chair Auntie Veris. I am looking, and I am not seeing any hands raised or unmutes. So, Mr. Schwartz, that's going to complete the staff presentation. I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present tonight, if they would like to address the commission. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would like to ask if you have received the staff report, read the conditions, and agree with them.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Brittany and Jeff Lehman. We are currently at six-nine-two-five Willow Pete Drive here in Flagstaff. And yes, we have received the, the work, the paperwork.
Okay, and you agree with the conditions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Lehman. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the Lehmans this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand or unmute, and I will call on you. Not seeing any, I'm going to close it to the public, and I'm going to open it at commissioned level. Vice Chair Burton, would you please start?
Yeah, I remember this case, and I'm hoping everything's going well for them. It seems it probably is, given they're coming back to renew the CUP. So, yeah, if there's been no complaints or, or any concerns from the neighbors, then I absolutely can make the findings again.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you, Chair Auntie Veris. I would like to make a couple of comments relative to what Mr. Schwartz had to say. I did visit the site for the initial CUP on this. I got to say, the applicant was very, very cooperative and helpful in dealing with the issues of noise. The applicant had done some work in evaluating noise levels of what would be used as a part of the operation. And my research also indicated they were quite accurate. We looked at ambient noise levels. She used a cellphone app, which I have found that cellphone apps for determining noise levels have turned out to be quite accurate if they are properly used. I was there when she did the ambient sound levels, and we got very good data. So later cases indicated that the cellphone apps for this type of use have been very worthwhile and quite accurate. That being said, I can make the findings for this, and I am very pleased to see that there have been no complaints, because initially, some of the neighbors were concerned about this. So I can make findings for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I remember this back in two thousand nineteen, and I can make the findings again, and concur with the, what my other fellow Commissioners have said.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford.
Mr. Schwartz, are we putting a time limit on this CUP?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Clifford, I believe that I have, let me take a look really quick. I have a five-year time limit on it. Yeah. All right, it's what's recommended.
I may have read it and read right over it, and I, I, that's why I was asking. I remember the case. I can make the findings to approve. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Best?
I'm excited about this. It sounds like a great project, a great community project, and I can definitely make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
In the review of the staff report, I noticed that the old Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan was referenced in the staff report, and I don't think that there's any substantive difference between the two that would impact this particular CUP, but would suggest in the future to make sure that the updated Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan is used, and I can make the findings of fact.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. This is Chair Auntie Veris, and I remember this case very clearly. One of the reasons that I did was because I thought, what a great idea for somebody to be willing to give of their resources, their material possessions, their time, their energy, to pour into the lives of other people, to give valuable skills. The, I remember as we worked through this, I remember the noise level comments and concerns. I do remember some of the concerns of the neighbors. This was a case that was approved, and obviously, it had to have worked well in the community because we haven't had complaints. They've been compliant with the conditions that they previously had. And as Vice Chair Burton said, they're coming back to renew this, so there must be purpose in it. So I very much agree with the comments made by my, by my other, my fellow Commissioners. And just on a personal note, I grew up here in Flagstaff, and I just on a personal note, I grew up here in Flagstaff and I was very active in 4H. And that was also a place where I learned just some basic skills that to this day I still know, I still use, they've become a part of my life. And so I would just like to commend the applicants this evening for their willingness to give of themselves to help the youth in this community because I believe it will make a difference, it will impact, and it will just make for a better community going forward. With that, I can certainly make the findings to approve it. And so I will accept a motion and a second, please.
All right, I'll move that we approve CUP dash twenty-three dash zero zero one.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I had a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP twenty-three zero zero one. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye, and I wish we'd approved it for ten years.
You know what? Going back to that, what was the time period on this? I'm toggling between two screens tonight and having a little okay, this is for a term of five years. Okay, now I will say, Commissioner Wilson, let me just interject this, that this would have been an administrative approval had they reapplied prior to the expiration date. I'm just willing to bet that because it expired this time and they had to come through this, I bet you they're not going to forget next time. And it can be approved administratively if things go forward. And if that's the case, it can be approved with an extended time period. So, or extended for five more years. So with that, I can also make the findings and I do vote aye. So the motion passes unanimously. The next case on the agenda is CZZC two-two dash zero one eight.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is a zone change from RR five to RR one at seventy-one seventy-five West Naval Observatory Road, just west of Flagstaff. Kelly Bingham of our planning staff is managing this case. I see she's already got her screen shared. So go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is a zone change, as Mr. McNeely mentioned, from RR five to RR one zoning in the West Peak subdivision. There we go. The applicant for this case is Brandon Richards. The owner is AXXO Holdings LLC. This parcel is located at seven-one-seven-five Naval Observatory Road. This is right along the entrance onto the I forty west from Route sixty-six. The parcel size is one point zero seven acres and the current zoning is RR five. RR five has a minimum five acre lot size requirement that this parcel does not currently meet. So the request is to change the zone from RR five to RR one, which would only have a one acre minimum parcel size. And they would like to develop this parcel with a single family dwelling. Here's a vicinity map. You'll see in the bottom right-hand corner, the interchange between the I forty and the I seventeen. Coming up the I forty, you'll see the subject property. And here's an up-close version of that. This is our aerial photo. At the bottom of the screen, you can see the on-ramp from Route sixty-six onto the I forty. And you'll see Naval Observatory Road coming northwest of that. Here's a photo of the site. This is on Naval Observatory Road looking northwest. And the parcel is on the left. So you can see there's some grading there. We'll discuss that a little bit later. So the reason that the applicant is requesting this zone change is because they cannot obtain any permits. This parcel is undersized and the zoning ordinance calls this a non-conforming situation. What this means is that when they come to request building permits or anything else from community development, we cannot issue anything. So it's not to say the parcel can be used, but it is very limited on what they can do with it. The adjacent properties do have homes and the applicant would like to develop this property similarly. A variance was requested for a very similar use last year. And that request was denied due to the findings that need to be made for a variance. They just weren't able to meet those findings. Keeping in mind that the findings for a zone change are different, I'll move on. Here's the site plan. This is just a very general proposal from the applicant. You can see the single family dwelling, their proposed septic and the driveway coming from the north. And this parcel has a little bit of a unique background. It was created with the West Peak subdivision in nineteen ninety-three. And it was physically separated from the rest of the original sixty-six acre parcel. So the developers decided not to include it in any of the original lots because it would be essentially unusable, given that it was separated by Naval Observatory Road. However, typically when a tract is set aside and not included in a lot, there's a purpose designated for it. This one did not have any designation. There was nothing that staff could find that set it aside for any particular use. And the only thing that staff was able to find were the conditions, which suggested that both tracks on the plaque could be developed with a variance. Again, this was tried last year. But because of the findings that needed to be made, this didn't really work out. Here's a photo of the subdivision plaque. You can see how this tract was separated from the rest of the subdivision. And it didn't really make sense to include it in any of the existing lots. I wanted to touch on the community character a little bit because that is one of the findings for a zone change that needs to be met. This area is very heavily treed. And as you saw in the photo of the site, there's a big difference in the grade from Naval Observatory Road to the highest point of the subject property. It's about twenty feet. The proposed site plan shows the dwelling about four hundred feet away from the nearest residence. And it doesn't actually border any other parcels. All of that being said, residential development would be consistent with the rest of the development of the nearby properties. So just to illustrate some of these points a little bit more clearly, I'll start on the bottom with the topography. You can see that the three parcels, I'm circling with my mouse if you can see it, but the three parcels on the west are about the same grade as our subject property. The only thing is that they're separated by Naval Observatory Road. And then you can see beyond that, the grade drops off. There's very, very low likelihood that any noise would carry or that they would be able to see this property. And then up top here, you can see just how many trees there are in between the neighboring properties and the subject property. There's a lot of sound mitigation and a lot of visual mitigation of any impacts that this development might have. To address the public participation, the applicant did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting on November twenty-fifth. One person attended the meeting. The applicant received three letters of opposition that you should have been able to view in the packet. Staff has also since received two letters of opposition after the staff report was written and the packet was created. Staff believes that the zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan, regional plan, and zoning ordinance as outlined in the staff report, especially given that the approval would eliminate a non-conforming situation. The rural residential zoning would retain the same allowable uses and performance standards. Again, it's just the difference in the parcel size that's allowable between the RR five and the RR one. And additionally, the conditions at the approval of Z ninety-three nine suggested that this parcel could be developed for residential use. And there was no other use suggested for this parcel. Here are your findings of fact for the zone change, which I can come back to if you would like. That's the conclusion of our presentation. Staff can make the findings and recommends the commission board a recommendation of approval of ZZC twenty-two eighteen to the Board of Supervisors. I'll open it up to questions, but I know that the applicant was also hoping to share some information with the board, potentially share his screen with you. So just keep that in mind. He might be able to address some additional questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bingham. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am looking to see if any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant. I am not seeing any. So if the applicant would like to, I do see a Mr. Steve Philpotts hand raised. This is not the time on for public input. This is the time for commissioners to ask questions of staff. The next thing is for the applicant to address the commission. Then I will open it up to the public. So I would like to ask if the applicant would like to address the commission on this case tonight. I would like to ask that you please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received the staff report and if you do agree with the conditions. And if you would like to do a presentation this evening, please feel free to go ahead and do so.
Okay, yeah, my name is Brandon Richards. I am the applicant here. And I did, I did receive the packet and I do approve all of those conditions there.
Okay, can I get you to state your address, please?
Sorry, I currently live at seven-five-three Comanche, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight-six-zero-zero-five, and that's in Mountaineer.
Okay, and do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, I made a small little slide earlier today.
Okay, if you would like to present it, please go ahead.
Okay, let me get my video on here. And then I'm going to share the screen. It's saying that I don't have permission via my system. I did not anticipate that one, but I can go over. A lot of the stuff that I have is pretty similar to what Kelly did go through. But I wanted to, I don't know, these pictures are kind of important to me, but that's all right. So I'll just go through it instead of wasting any more time. So thanks for having me tonight. As you all know, I'm here to obtain a zone change from the RR dash five to RR one for the subject property in order to build a single family residence for my family and I. I am aware of the prior board of adjustments to now for the variance back in January of twenty-two, which is why I'm going for the zone change. I think that'd be the best approach considering the parcel was a non-conforming since the original development of that neighborhood back in ninety-four. The unusual size or non-complying size was never buildable. And so we're just going through the zone change to make it more conforming and to buy, you know, build a house for us. So below that, I did provide a plat map, as I did Kelly before. One things that we went through in my pre-op meeting was how there is a multitude of other non-conforming parcel sizes within a mile, and I did provide a map for that. But if you follow Naval Observatory, less than a mile west, you'll see three different zones. There's a general RR three, RR five, and then even an RR seven on, I think that's Westwood across Highway forty there. So there's several non-conforming parcels within the area. And so I don't feel that this one is too out of line, considering they're all similar residential zonings. I did go through the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan several times and I found one line that really jumped out to me and it's under the land use and growth under policy eight. It states that to eliminate land use or zoning conflicts, transition non-conforming uses to a conforming use and work to alleviate the negative impacts of non-conforming uses over time. When amendments to the zoning ordinance are adopted, thought should be given as to whether existing uses should be considered non-conforming or granted legal status. So I, and then I went into, I kind of, I actually did copy paste what Kelly put in my application packet. I just wanted to reiterate if I could, some of the findings that were there. If we have a brief minute to go through that. So line item one, that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan and this ordinance. And the finding for there is the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the county comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance that supports a variety of housing types and the reduction of non-conforming situations. Finding number two is that the change is in the interest or will further the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. And the finding on that one is the proposed zone change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. The proposed residence will need obtained building, engineering and environmental quality permits in order to be developed. And if this project cannot meet those required standards, it will not be built. But of course, everything will be abide by as the county sees fit in regards to obtaining engineering stamps, environmental quality stamps and all the proper permitting. And line three there would, is that the change will be, will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood, nor be detrimental to the adjacent properties. And that finding was solidified by the requested zone. Zoning would allow for development of the subject properties with the residential use consistent with the established character of the neighborhood. The conditions of approval suggested that the residential use was acceptable for this parcel. As part of my pre-op, I had to get a service subscription from Ponterosa Fire District and that agreement I got was agreement number two-two dash two-eight. A couple more things here. I did also do a measurement and I got a little bit further of a distance between the my plat map and where the closest house. I got about four hundred and fifty feet. And as it pertains to like a neighborhood where I live now in Mountaineer, that's essentially nine lots or nine houses separation between my, where I plan to put the house and where the neighbor is. And like Kelly said, that property is about twenty feet off of the road and is also separated by a road. And I can't imagine how many trees between there and here and there. So I can't envision this being an eyesore or a burden to the neighbors, especially with the density of those trees and the property and the surrounding and the surrounding other properties. And then the last deal is it pertains to our building plans. We intended to design a house that is around two thousand square feet that is consistent with the development in the area. And we'll use, we expect to use neutral, natural colors on the exterior. We moved to Flagstaff to be in the trees and there's no reason for us to paint a big bright blue or yellow house. It just doesn't make sense. And that's, doesn't flow with how we want our house to design. So it'll, it'll be neutral, natural colors outside. And I just wanted to make a point. I know in the past, and I think it was mentioned in the variance last year, that the neighbors are concerned about us potentially tapping into their well. I don't, I'm not exactly sure where it is. I'm pretty sure it's in tract A, which is very far away. It's, it's got to be at least eighth mile, quarter mile away. It's not our intention. We actually plan on putting in a, in a cistern system of several tanks to be somewhat self-reliant. And as just a small matter of fact, we do plan on having onsite rainwater retention for our gardens. My wife's a heavy gardener, so we'll be doing that. And then again, we moved the Flagstaff to be in the trees and the mountains. And so we're going to do everything our power. So when we orient the house to sit between the current vegetation without having to remove many trees, even if I have to make my driveway not straight, I'll weave around some trees to not cut down trees. That's why we're here. So that's pretty much all I had there. I wish I could have shown the pictures, but maybe I could download a PDF and send it over later or something.
Okay, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Thank you, Mr. Richards, for that presentation. I'm going to ask now if any of the commissioners have any questions for you at this time. I am not seeing I am not seeing any commissioners. Hands raised. So with that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. And I do, I would like to just reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting when I read the meeting rules and procedures. That all relevant information on. Is welcomed. A couple of things that would not be relevant this evening would be. The fact that he did, the applicant was denied at his variance hearing. That has absolutely no bearing on this hearing tonight whatsoever. And the other thing that would not be relevant are any water issues. So I'm not going to allow any comments related to either of those topics. So with that, on Mr. Steve Philpott, would you, uh, your hand is raised if you would state your name and address for the record, please? Mr. McNeely, I'm going to ask that you please set a three-minute timer and would you give a one-minute warning? With that, Mr. Philpott, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Philpott. I live at seventy-one fifty West Naval Observatory Road. Um, my wife and I are in opposition to this request for a zone change of the. It is currently zoned for five acres and the applicant is trying to get this changed down to a one. Um, our property is adjacent to this one point zero seven acre parcel. The land, the zone is intended to designate areas of the county for low-density residential use. On a minimum lot size of five acres. We are one of the original partners of the West Peak subdivision. This piece of property did not conform to the minimum size requirements of the established zoning for the. For the intended. Excuse me, um, established zoning for the subdivision. It is listed on the plat map as track B and was ten, intended to be green space and to act as a sound buffer. From, uh, traffic on I forty. It was decided by our managing partner that this parcel would be donated. To a nonprofit entity so that it could be held in trust and forever preserved as green space. In nineteen ninety-three, the Guidance Center was chosen as an entity to hold this property. In two thousand and two, other attempts, uh, attempts by others were made to modify the zoning and those were, uh, rejected. Um, the Coconino County zoning ordinance was established to conserve and promote public health, safety. Convenience and general welfare of the present and future citizens of Coconino County. Any approval of this rezoning request would be contrary to the intent of the RR-five rural residential five-acre minimum. Zoning of Coconino County properties. We urge the board to deny the zoning request by peace, though. Um, Brandon, Brandon Richards and Peace, the owner of the property. In order to preserve the general intent and purpose of the established zoning ordinance.
Mr. Philpott, you've got one minute. Thank you.
Okay, and that's all I have to say. Um, actually, I have a few more comments. Um. So we are one of three properties, um, within three hundred feet of this. And I don't believe, um, proper notification was sent out as required. Um, under Coconino County zoning ordinance five-point-four. Uh, we did not receive notice of this hearing by mail. Um, also, there's just one sign that's buried in the snow right now. Um, and that's it as far as notifying the, notifying this us. And then I was just curious how, um, somebody that doesn't own a property. Can apply for this variant size. Um, you know, since Brandon doesn't own it, I was just curious how he could apply for this, um, variant, so. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Philpott. Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm going to ask if there is. Anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? It looks like there is an. Elena Pericello?
Yeah, oh my gosh, really good, yes. I don't, anybody's ever got it that well before.
Okay, if you could state your name and address for the, uh, commission and Mr. McNeely, please begin a three-minute clock.
So I don't have a lot, um, of additional stuff to say. I agree with a lot of the points that Steve made. Um, my name is Elena Pericello. I live at six-six-zero-zero West Bell Springs Way, um, part of the. Um, West Peak subdivision. Um, and I guess, you know. I, I really agree with Steve and, and part of my concern would be the precedent this would set for the rest of the. Um, subdivision with people coming in and buying properties and, and splitting them up into smaller parcels trying to. You know, I don't make more money off their property or whatever, which would really destroy the nature of. The neighborhood we have right now. Um, but that's really all I just, I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pericello. Anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission? All right, I am not seeing any.
Sorry, I didn't figure out how to raise my hand. Am I allowed to speak up one more time?
Uh, Mr. Richards, at this time, uh, you are not. It is at the public. It is open to the public at this time. So, um, the commissioners can certainly come back. And ask you questions. It may circle back, but at this time, it is at the public, so.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna reach out again and ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission. All right, um, this is Chair Aunt Taveras and Ms. Bingham, I would like to. Ask you, Mr. Philpott brought up a point that. The neighbors within three hundred feet were not noticed. Can you address that, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I can address the posting on the site and then I will allow Ms. Hernandez to address, uh, the letters. Uh, we follow the same procedure for noticing all hearing items. Um, as far as posting on the site, it was really difficult to find a place where I thought that the nearby owners could see it. Uh, that was still on-site because there's such a difference in the grade. You know, I was just trying to find somewhere I could stick it where they would see it. Um, one place was in a snowbank on the side of the road. Uh, and then further down towards the other end of the property, I stapled it to a tree. So there were two signs on the property, uh, but yeah, unfortunately with the topography of the site, it was a little difficult to put it in someplace. Where they would be able to see it.
Okay, and I do understand that. Ms. Hernandez, could you address? Uh, the notification of neighbors within the three-hundred-foot radius, please?
Uh, yes, postcards were sent out, uh, within the, uh, proper timeframe, um. Why no one received it? I mean, I can't say. Uh, but I, uh, do have the postcards that were sent out and, um. What else can I, uh, explain about that?
Uh, actually, I think that you've said, uh, you, you have explained it. And if I'm understanding you correctly. You're saying that the county was the one that sent out the notification to the neighbors within three hundred feet. You mailed them out and have you received any of them back?
I would have to actually go into the office and see what, uh, I do get postcards back frequently. So I would have to go through, uh, and see what might have been returned.
Okay, but you did send them to the address of record.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's all we can do. So, um, it sounds to me. Like the notification procedures were adhered to properly, um. Let's see, there was. Seemed like there was another question I had and I cannot remember it at this time. So with that, um, I'm going to close it to the public and I'm going to open it. At commission discussion. Vice Chair Burton, would you please start? The conversation.
Yeah, um. The, this is an interesting one and. I, I personally, I don't see a problem with the rezoning of this one. Um, I can understand, um. Ms. Pericello's concern for setting precedent, but this is like a completely unique situation. Compared to what anyone else would do, um. Because it is, it's, it's, it's its own little island and I, I don't believe that. There's any kind of negative impact regarding density because we're just talking about one house. And that one house, I, I mean, we heard directly from the applicant, they don't. Intend to take down any more trees than necessary. And then when they build a house, that's additional buffer for, um, interstate noise, so. My only concern is the spot zone, but again, because this is such a. It's its own little island, um, that's not as much of a concern to me as if it would be. In the middle of a huge development, like right smack in the middle and not on the fringe, so. Um. Yeah, those are, those are currently my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me, then let me just, um, drill down on that a little further. Can you make the findings? Necessary to approve the zone change request this evening?
I believe I can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, my point of view is very much like that expressed by Vice Chair Burton. One of the things that struck me about this is that, uh. When this development was plotted. This probably should have been addressed as a conservation easement for parcels, uh, such as we're dealing with. Um, in terms of, uh, what was done by the, uh, Board of Adjustment. In any event, regardless of whether it's this case or any other, the standards, uh, are much stricter than they are. For zone change. In a case like this, I think it, uh, it would do a disservice. To the owner of the property or a previous owner or a future owner. To say that, uh, because of a quirk in the original development. That we will deny you the use of your property. Uh, I am, um. Very much i- in favor of maintaining property rights that are reasonable. And in this case, I think they're very reasonable. The effect on the surrounding, uh, neighborhood. Will be, uh, minimal. And as such, uh, I think, uh, the applicant has made his case. And, uh, also, uh, the analysis by Ms. Bingham. Has been very thorough and well thought out and also makes the case for this zone change. I can make the findings for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
Uh, I agree completely with my two previous commissioners and, um. It, it seems to me that, um, because the tract didn't have any defined purpose on the plat. You know, I think that just strengthens the. Argument, so I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. Um, you know, if they wanted to keep a green space, they wouldn't give it to. A, um. Entity that if you get into money problems, you may have to sell it to keep your doors open. Should have gave it to the Sierra Club or some other organization that specializes in green space and keeping it, uh, green space. Um, I don't think there was a lot of thought put into that, so I can make the findings to, uh, to approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I sort of feel the pain of the neighbors, um. But I think the fact is that, uh. This was, it could have been the intention, the informal intention to keep this as a green space, but in fact. It was passed on to someone who apparently. Has the right to sell it. It is therefore sort of an orphaned property. With no restrictions, has an owner. And I think it, it's a kind of a tough call. I put myself in the neighbor's situation, but. There, there just wasn't a rigor and rigorous enough process when this was set up. To keep this as a green space parcel. It's actually a privately owned parcel. And therefore, uh, I, I have to look at it that way and say that it, it, uh, they do have the right to use it. It is not going to impact anyone a great deal. And so I can make the finding.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. We heard, um. From staff that there were two other letters of opposition that we have not heard or seen. Um, and, and I feel like we really need to know what those said before we can make a decision here. Is it too late to ask? To hear what those said?
No, it's not, Ms. Bingham. Um, beyond the ones that we received in the packet. Can you shed some light on what the other two opposition letters were the basis for them and also. The, the authors of the letters, please, in this public conference version?
Of course, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I will go, actually go ahead and just share my screen. I'll pull it up so that you all can see it. I'll give a summary for people who are unable to view the screen. Um, I'm just pulling it up right now. All right, here comes the first one. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit for you all. So the first one is from Barbara Horton. Uh, I actually mean to say David and Barbara Horton. Uh, it was both of them. Uh. They opposed the rezoning from RR-five to RR-one. They believe it would alter the character of the neighborhood, be contrary to the original, original developers' intentions. Of designating the area as green space. Um, we strive to preserve the rural character of Flagstaff. And we are sure that this builder is capable of locating another site where his plan would fit in more appropriately. So that's the first letter. Uh, does anyone in the commission oppose me moving on to the next one?
No, please, please go ahead.
And very quickly, I'll pull up the next. This one, I believe, is the same text that you've seen before, uh, but it was sent to staff this morning and. Patrice Horstman as well, representing District One. This is from Steve and Michelle Philpott. I believe Mr. Philpott just spoke as well. Um, I believe he summarized his positions very well when he spoke earlier. Please let me know if you would like me to read anything aloud here.
Okay, and I'm looking at that quickly and I think that Mr. Philpott did. Set forth all of these points that were captured in his comments on the public hearing. So I am, I do not see, uh, Commissioner Wilson. Does this satisfy your concerns?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. I appreciate, um, everyone's patience here. I, my concern is that the second finding, in fact, that we have to make is. That the proposed zone change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. Um, and it appears that. Um, four of the, uh, immediate neighbors of this particular parcel all oppose this. And I personally am having a difficult time understanding how we are not having a detrimental effect. On public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare, especially when you consider that a smaller zoned lot and a therefore lower-priced home. Um, when comps are done, can actually affect the financial value of, um, a joint or adjacent properties. So I just needed to, uh, understand what the rest of the, uh, issue there was from other. Folks and I appreciate your patience.
Oh, okay, so, um, Commissioner Wilson, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Um, we cannot take the financial aspect of this. Uh, when you were talking about, um, cons.
Right.
There, there has been no. There, there has been no evidence presented tonight that would substantiate that.
Okay.
Like, like actual hard facts. And what I would like to do, if you would go to the staff report, it's actually on page seventy-one. And Ms. Bingham, in her staff report, addresses the three findings of fact that are required to be made. And then she puts out, she answers how, uh, excuse me, number two can be made. The proposed zone change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. The proposed residence would need to obtain building, engineering and environmental quality permits in order to be developed. If this project cannot meet the required standards, it will not be built. Uh, that is her analysis, if you will, for how that finding could be made. Do you disagree with her analysis? And if so, specifically what?
I, I believe she's being overly broad with respect to her um, how she addresses safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. And, and she's entitled to do that and, and I'm entitled to my opinion, so. In, in this particular case, I don't believe I can make that second finding a fact.
Okay, and, and can you state the reason one more time, just real clearly for the record?
Um, because I believe based on the public comment from the neighbors adjacent to the property, there is detriment to safety, comfort, convenience and welfare.
Okay, and could you be more specific, like what it is?
Um, they were in their comments.
Okay, and that would be that it was zoned for five acres and not one?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Um, so then you will not be able to make the three findings of fact needed to approve this motion tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner Wilson, and this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I, um, I want to say that I do, I did hear the neighbors tonight, and I do understand the concerns. I did want to speak to Ms. Pericelli that on, this would not be a precedent-setting zone change. I understand what you're talking about. If this would have been, if the applicant would have owned one of the five acre lots and would have come into this commission and said, hey, you know, I would really like to zone this down to one acre, and then his intent would be to sell off the other four. I can guarantee you that that would never, I don't even think he would have gotten past the pre-application hearing, let alone to the commission. It never would have passed muster with this commission. So I want to address the neighbor's concern that this would in any way be precedent-setting. Um, because the scenario that I just laid out, it would never happen. I, I could never make any findings that would ever allow something like that to happen. But in this case, because it is so unique, this, this piece of property is, it's basically an island. It's really not visible from the other property owners. I'll give you, they may, you know, it may be adjacent, but it is four hundred and fifty feet away, not really visible, thickly treed. And I believe that the way Ms. Bingham has analyzed this case, I agree with her analysis this evening. And as a result, I can make the findings of fact necessary to move forward with this zone change. So with that, um, I'll go ahead and accept a motion and a second on this, please.
Very well, I'll go forward with a motion on this. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZC twenty-two dash zero one eight.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles to make a recommendation, excuse me, recommendation on of approval for ZC two-two dash zero one eight. All of those in favor, and I have a second by Vice Chair Burton. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair, or excuse me, Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. So the motion does pass, and this case will move to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval. The next case or next item on the agenda is case number ZC two-two dash zero two one.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. In this case is ZC twenty-two dash zero two one. The property owner is Grand Canyon Oasis LLC. The applicant is Shelley Smithson. And the property is located at two eight two seven two US Highway eighty-nine. It's south of Gray Mountain and adjacent to Wapaki. Uh, parcel size is nine point one seven acres, and this property is split zone, so three point zero seven acres of it is in the commercial general zone. And six point one acres of the subject property is in the general zone. This request is to rezone the portion that's general zone into the commercial general zone so that the entire parcel is in the commercial general zone. Here's a vicinity map, and so here's Highway eighty-nine. Uh, it's actually adjacent to, uh, the subject property is adjacent to a number of public land managers. So Wapaki National Monument to the east, Arizona State Land Trust to the north. And to the south is Coconino National Forest. The parcel across the highway from this parcel is also split sound. Here's an aerial photo of the subject property, so you can see, uh, this yellow line is the, the split zone line, so everything to the west of it here is in the commercial general zone already. There's a historic trading post on the property and a historic motel, and it looks like bisecting the zones. This is where they have a storage uh, storage building on the property. The rest is undeveloped. Uh, there's a parking area also adjacent to the highway. Here's some photos of the subject property. So these two photos on top are the historic trading post building. On the left, this is a picture from before when the current applicants and owners came to own the property. And here's a picture on the right of some, basically some renovations they've done to the historic sign and to that, uh, trading post building. There's also a historic motel on the property and forgot to show on the area, but right behind uh, these two structures is they have existing RV spaces that were approved administratively by staff. Uh, some of them are park models you can see, and others are just your typical sort of RV. For some details on the request, and I apologize for the wordiness of this slide. Uh, so again, there were six units for the existing commercial general portion of the property that were approved administratively by staff. Um, the applicant is currently requesting to get this zone changed in order to add fourteen additional full hookup RV spaces on the proposed expanded commercial zoning. Um, and they would have associated recreational uses such as a dog park and a disc golfing area that are shown on the applicant's site plan. Uh, the applicant also requests for additional dry RV spaces and horse stalls on uh, that would be actually on the existing commercial zoning area. Um, and actually, technically, these could be approved administratively by staff. Um, the applicant, just a side note, has been approved for a grant for funding for a phase one environmental assessment. Uh, and a grant from the EPA for an assessment of the historic trading post for reuse of it, and that trading post was placed on the property in nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, what they intend to do with it in the future is to have a gift shop, limited food sales and drinks um, and a lounge area for the guests of the RV park. Uh, so here is the site plan. Again, we have the dividing line between commercial and the general zone portion of the property. So these are the existing RV spaces. In the immediate future, the applicant plans to put, uh, four full hookup RV spaces here, and then further on the easternmost portion of the property. Uh, the applicant is planning in the long term to have nine full hookup RV spaces. This space up here, that's closer to where there is a parking area in the highway already is where they plan to have the dry RV spaces and some horse stalls. Uh, I have these standards that are typically applied to recreational vehicle parks uh, in the commercial zones, and I won't go through all of them, but basically the applicant's request is conforming uh, with all of these standards that are typically placed on RV parks. And for analysis, the administrative permit for the existing RV spaces uh, required that there be a fire and safety, uh, fire, safety and emergency services with Summit Fire and that they create uh, an emergency plan. So, uh, staff is just recommending a condition that as the um, RV park would expand, that they also uh, get back with Summit Fire and make sure that the plan that they have is adequate for the additional spaces. Uh, same, similar type of situation with ADOT encroachment permits. Um, they're approved for so many units and expansion might require additional review uh, by ADOT. And as far as lighting, landscaping and signage, staff is just recommending um, that they meet the zoning ordinance requirements. So those are things that, you know, don't necessarily have to be in conditions. They would have to meet these requirements anyway. Uh, this is kind of a heads up for the applicant, and just to be clear, um, staff recommends that they readdress these issues as the park expands. As far as citizen participation, there was only the one private property owner across the street. Uh, they did notify that property owner, and there was no comment. The applicant also reached out to the plan, uh, public land managers adjacent to the subject property, and there was no comment. Staff didn't receive any comments, uh, up until this point. As far as long-range plan compliance, uh, only the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan applies for this specific area. It supports tourist-related economic development that's consistent with and showcases the county's natural beauty. It supports brownfield remediation, like the applicant has started doing with uh, the phase one assessment of the old trading post building. Uh, the comprehensive plan supports protection of historic cultural resources and recommends fire and emergency response plans. I have the more detailed uh, goals and policies of the comprehensive plan that are applicable in the staff report, and I'll be happy to go through those if you have any questions. And I also have a detailed look through all the three findings of fact required for approval of a zone change, and I'll just briefly say right now, unless there are questions, that staff is able to make all of those required findings of fact. Um, I have this slide that just goes through what the recommended conditions of approval are. Um, but I, I'll just come back to that if there are any questions on those. Uh, so for now, if the commission can make the required findings of fact, staff is recommending that the commission forward a recommendation of approval for case ZC twenty-two zero two one to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schwartz, uh, we've had about an RV or a campground a month for years. And over the years, we've developed a list of conditions that help mitigate the off-site impacts of these projects. What we found over the years was that people going out from uh, campgrounds and RV parks had quite a bit of impact on the land, and we wanted to make sure that we anticipated those impacts and made them as little as possible. I've got a list here of sixteen items that we have routinely applied to campgrounds uh, recently, and we've developed this list over the years. None of them are on the conditions, are included in the conditions in this case so far. Um, and I would like to include them, in particular, this uh, project border, state land, national forest land and national monument land. So it's particularly important that the folks who arrive here, uh, know where they should go, where they shouldn't go, and, uh, what they should do when they do go into, uh, lands to, uh, public lands to, well, first of all, they shouldn't go in state lands at all, without a permit, is my understanding. I don't know if they are allowed to go into the monuments. And they can probably go into the national forest. Uh, but they need this information, and, uh, these sixteen elements uh, will give it to them. Um, do you have them? I sent them to Mr. Hernandez earlier today for another case. And Mr. Short, I believe, has them. And so, Madam Chair, at some point, uh, before we get to voting and comments, I'd like to uh, have them present and, and go over them and make a case to include them in the conditions. So I'm, uh, up for advice on how best to do that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, Commissioner Best. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. Do you have those or staff? Could you, could you put those up? Mr. Short, I do see your hand raised. Could you, could you comment on this, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, I do have those. I can put those up right now if you'd like.
If, if you would, please. And Commissioner Best, the ones that Mr. Short is going to put up, I would like to make sure that they are the same ones that you're talking about, so everyone's on the same page here. Let, let's start with that.
They are. Uh, I sent some of them in bold, uh, and that is for the subsequent case, not for this case. And, uh, as far as I know, the, none of these duplicate any of the conditions that are proposed in the staff report. Most of the commissioners have seen these before. Commissioner Wilson is going to need a few minutes to take a look. Basically, they, uh, their, their response to problems that we've seen, um, you know, we've seen uh, the, the OHV razors tearing through adjacent neighborhoods and through the national forest. But if people can just read through them and take a look and see if they think they apply.
Oh, okay, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm looking at number eleven where it addresses the helicopter pad. Is that relevant to this case at all?
Well, it isn't now, uh, but, uh, who knows, there, they could, if we don't put in a condition, uh, they could put in a helicopter pad and do helicopter tours.
I do believe they would have to come back. Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they began that use on this property, would they not have to come back before the commission and get approval for that?
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. My understanding is that that's a conditional use in the zone, so it would require that. I'll just verify that.
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff, my understanding is that that's a conditional use in the zone, so it would require that, I'll just verify that really quickly.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, Mister Schwartz, and if if that is correct, I do believe we could remove number eleven. I also would like staff. Uh, to review this list as well to see if there is any duplication or ones that you feel. Uh, do not necessarily apply here and I am currently reading through these as well.
Sure, and since I found it pretty quickly, I would just like to update you, it looks like heli pads and heli ports. Are not permitted in the CG ten thousand zone, it's. Which is kind of funny because in the general zone, which is the existing zone. I believe that is a conditional use. So it's just not permitted, uh, based on the request.
Okay, so then number eleven would not, uh, Commissioner Bass proposed. Conditions, number eleven would not be relevant in this case, it could be struck.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, on.
And I'm not sure about the fire danger in this area, um, I don't know the level of of uh grass out there. Whether a grass fire could start there, so I I. You know, th- these are just the ones that uh we have applied to many different uh. Situations and uh we could delete some or add some as we, as we see fit. But I think it's important that the that the concept of. Mitigating impacts on adjacent private and public lands uh be consistently applied. As we, as these uh projects come before us.
Okay, okay, I think that number eleven can be removed. But I will ask the other commissioners to please take a look at this, I would like staff to look again, make sure there is no duplication. On. I'm gonna really rely rely on staff and on. And the commissioners here because I don't have written stuff in front of me tonight, I'm toggling between two screens. And so on with that, I'm gonna go ahead, or Commissioner Best, did you have any other questions at the time for Mister Schwartz?
Uh, no, if uh if we could just, uh. It's it's a little awkward in our schedule here how we how we discuss these, so. Uh, we could just be a little flexible and make sure that everybody gets a shot at it and. In particular, Commissioner Wilson is is new to this list, so he's gonna need a little time to digest it.
Right, and I do see Commissioner Wilson's hand raised, Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, uh, Chair, I I'm looking at items, um. Five, six and seven, applicant shall provide, um, and you you know, I'm questioning how these would be provided, um, how we would know whether they were provided or not. Whether there's any value in providing these, um, and if we're going to provide this kind of information. Um, should we also include things like um basic first aid and maybe some other good to know stuff? Um, I I question i- if we can't go too far here with conditions in some of these permits, um. I also question item number twelve, um, there shall be no OHVs allowed except for fire suppression and maintenance vehicles. Um, OHVs are are legal, like if if I'm understanding what you're talking about with OHVs. Are street legal here in the state of Arizona and to say that they're not allowed, um, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Nor does number thirteen, um, storage facilities, since there are already storage facilities there. Um, I'm not sure with the value of adding that in a. Uh, you know, if it were a large enough storage facility, it would have to be permitted, if it's not bigger than that, it doesn't, why would we have additional requirements? Um, to to, you know, emphasize this, um, item fifteen, again, OHVs. I I don't understand why we would have that, so I. I I don't see the merit in in those numbers that I just called off, that would be items number five, six, seven, um, eight, or no, I'm sorry, not eight, um. Twelve, thirteen and fifteen.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd be I'd be happy to respond at some point if you'd like me to.
Okay, what I think what we're going to do on at this point, because I see what we're veering into. Is commission discussion and we're at staff presentation. So to keep things in order, um, I'm going to, I do see, um. The your Commissioner Best, I see your proposed conditions on the screen right now. That is giving all of the commissioners, the other commissioners a chance. Uh, Commissioner Wilson has expressed his thoughts on that. And so what we're going to do is we're going to come back to this. At commission discussion, so where we're gonna stay at right now. Is we're going to stay with questions that commissioners have for staff at this time. Other than these proposed conditions. Did, uh, Commissioner Wilson, do you have other questions for staff beyond?
I do, um, item in the recommend recommended conditions of approval. Um, Summit Fires referenced a couple of different times, but all of them are incorrect, it's Summit Fire and Medical District. Um, and I I wonder, since they recently changed their name, if. Identify them by name instead of whatever the, you know, CAGA's local fire district is. Um, wouldn't be a better way to put it in here so that should name changes occur in the future, this won't trip us up.
Okay, let me get back to my other screen, uh, that. That is not a difficult thing to do to.
Items two and four.
Yeah, to li- to list things, let me get to that two and four. On, yeah, if they, if it has an updated name, to put in the. Correct current name would be appropriate, and so I don't think that there would be any issues with that. We can come back that when, and we can also come back to that at um commission discussion. Um, Commissioner, uh, Wilson, do you have anything, any other questions for staff?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Okay, um, and I will just ask staff at this time, do you? Do you see any any problem to, um, correcting as Commissioner Wilson just stated?
Chair Ontiveris, no, I don't see any problem with that, thanks for the note.
Okay, yeah, and why don't you just in in the ones that you have, why don't you just go ahead and put those modifications in now? So when we're reviewing all of the conditions that the commissioners ultimately decide on. We'll have that little issue cleared up right away.
Sure, and just to be sure, Madam Chair, um, and Commissioner Wilson, it's Summit Fire and Medical District, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, it is, in the signature of the uh fire agreement.
I think that was just an error on my part, I'll I'll um change that right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swor- uh Schwartz, I do not see any other commissioners' hands raised. So with that, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. If so, please state your name and address for the record, and I would also ask, like to ask if you have read the staff report. And if you agree with the conditions.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners, this is Shelley. My address is thirty two hundred Shantel Trail, Flagstaff, eight six zero zero four. Or five, sorry, and uh I have read the report and I do agree with the findings.
Okay, thank you, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Miss Smithson at this time? Okay, not seeing any, I'm going to ask if the, if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this evening. Or, excuse me, address the commission on this case this evening, if so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. And I am not seeing any, so with that, I am going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it to a. Commission discussion, uh, Mister Short, I see. Let's see, I'm not, I I'm not reading the chat, I believe it said it's done, does that mean the corrections to the conditions?
Madam Chair, this is uh Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff, I was asking uh Mister Short to send me. Those standard conditions, I wasn't able to find them, the the ones that Commissioner Best was discussing earlier. So that I'll be able to incorporate them and I can kind of show this live on the screen at your discretion. So he's done, he's sent those to me so that I can put those up.
Gotcha, okay, thank you for that explanation, all right, uh, we are now at commission discussion, uh, Vice Chair Burton.
Um, I don't really have much to to add, I I think we'll let Commissioner Best uh figure out what he'd like to have in place, um. I agree that we don't need the helicopter uh thing in there since it's irrelevant, but um I can make the findings.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I think that uh. Commissioner Best has addressed the concern that um with the conditions that have been uh added to similar cases in the past. Um. I did not think about it with this one in particular, I don't know why I missed that, um, we've got another case coming up where I think. Same thing's going to apply, um, there's a very good reason for adopting these, uh. Some of which has been considerable amount of feedback that we have heard from adjacent property owners. And a concern on the part of numerous people expressed about uh how the surrounding um property. Um, such as national forests, state lands, BLM land and others uh are uh treated. And that is because of the transient nature of the people who use uh an RV park like this. Um, and I'm going to leave it at that, uh, I think we're gonna get down the road here in a few minutes and start looking at uh. Those conditions and looking at them individually and saying, well, what should we retain, I do agree with the. Um, the uh idea that we uh don't need to address a helipad here and helicopter tours, however. So uh I will turn this over to other members of the commission at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Williams?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Best is kind of our authority on these campground issues, so I would defer to him. Um, but also, I I think. To stay consistent, it's important with these, all the different campgrounds that we have coming before us. Um, but at the same time, we can, you know, take things out that certainly don't really apply in this case, so. Uh, I think that's just the next discussion.
Okay, on Commissioner Clifford?
I concur with the other commissioners, um, Commissioner Best is has this list and um. We can go through it and add and delete as needed to uh. To manipulate it for this park. And I've been in, I've been past this park or past this uh. Property many a times and it is uh prairie, prairie grasses with uh. Um, shrub vegetation. So, and I really like what they're doing to it, so I can make the findings, we'll just have to hammer out a little bit of stuff here.
Okay, and and I will just uh state, Commissioner Best, I am going to be going to you next. I will just state that what I intend on doing after uh we have gone through, I'm going to uh let the other commissioner speak. But what I intend to do is have Mister Schwartz put up the conditions that he has. And then the conditions that you're proposing and we will, will put in the ones, the additional ones. From your, from the list that you have provided, uh, Commissioner Best. As appropriate and relevant to this case. Um, so Commissioner Best, other than that, at this time, do you have anything else?
Well, I just, uh, we have a new commissioner with us this evening and I and I wanna. Um, you know, everybody else has been through this for the last three years, so I just want to explain where, I guess where I am coming from. Um. When COVID started, uh, everybody wanted to get out of town because you couldn't do anything in town and suddenly we had. Uh, a lot of folks out in the woods and we had a lot of applications, I I'm sure we've had an average of, I don't know, one a month. For the last maybe two years for uh campgrounds and RV parks. Um, you could say that. The owner of the campground is not really responsible for what his folks do offsite. His or her folks, um. And you could take that point of view, but in the real world, what we found was. No one else was taking responsibility, uh, one would hope that the. Forest Service or uh the Park Service or the state would be staffed. To have enough folks out there to regulate what happens on their property, but the fact of the matter is, they do not. And. We found that uh when these campgrounds or RV parks are next to neighborhoods. Uh, you know, the the county sheriff uh was a long way away. And a lot of the impacts were not illegal, it wasn't people trying to do bad things. It was just people not understanding the impacts they were having. And uh just, just a little too much activity. In an area that uh is not really developed for activity, and so we saw, uh. People doing unsafe things regarding fire because they were ignorant, they were from the valley, they were from Minnesota. They didn't understand our fire situation, um, they might go out and um. You know, with a a group of uh ATVs, uh, OHVs. Tear through the forest, tearing through neighborhoods, raising dust. Uh, there's nobody out there fixing up the trails and there's nobody out there. Uh, policing where they go, there's nobody out there uh fixing the roads after they go through. And they're there for a few nights and then they disappear into the sunset. And so we got to a point where we felt like we had to ask. The owners of these facilities to really participate in the offsite mitigation. And. That's what this is really all about, um. Number five, the applicant shall provide leave no trace materials, those are easy to come by and cheap. They simply that there are, uh, there's, there's an organization, uh, Center for Outdoor Ethics. That will bas- basically give you a list and say, you know, take care of the, take care of the land, leave no trace, pretty simple. And you can get posters to that effect, uh. Number six is more difficult, applicant shall provide forest, grassland ecology, educational material. To increase awareness. Concerning offsite biological impacts and fire danger, uh, fire danger is absolutely critical. It's a cool story, it's something that people, if presented correctly, would be glad to know, it's educational. How how is the ecology of this region? Um. How does it work? And why is fire such a danger, it's not such a danger in Minnesota, but it, you know. The wrong person burning toilet paper around here can cause a nightmare. Um, I have. I am working on the Forest Service, I have talked to some Forest Service folks, I know they have some posters. I've seen them around, I would like to get to a place where we have a kind of a. A plug in for this as well, where for fifty bucks, uh, the applicant could go and buy five posters that would do the job. Uh, we're not there yet, uh. But I'd like to leave that in there just to encourage the applicant to take some responsibility for. Educating their uh, their customers. Um. I I think the probably the motorized vehicle issue is the. Maybe the hardest one to swallow for some people, uh, but the truth of the matter is, offsite. Motorized vehicles. Uh, th- there's nobody out there minding. The issue, there is no one cleaning after, up after them, there is no one keeping them on. Appropriate trails, there is no one making them slow down as they pass houses and uh raise dust. And so we simply said, we'd we'd rather not be in the business of giving permits to places that are going to create. Groups of OHVs tearing off into the. groups of OHVs tearing off into the national forest or private property. Helicopter pads, we had a couple of helicopter pads and that's why it's in there. They were there for emergency. I think it was out. I forget where it was, way east of town where there wasn't very good evacuation. And so they wanted one for evacuation. And we wanted to make sure that it didn't become a helicopter tour that was flying low over neighbors. Uh, storage facilities onsite shall be approved by staff. Many of these places pack up their tents in the winter. And we're creating kind of nasty looking storage. This probably not the case in this case. But we wanted to make sure that any building that went up was, was approved by staff and consistent with what we were trying to do. I think that goes over them and, and everybody can weigh in if you want to add more or take some out, but the idea is that if we don't ask the applicant to take responsibility, no one is taking responsibility. It simply isn't the staff from the state and federal and, and private landowners to take care of business. And so we just asked that the applicant take responsibility. And hopefully it's an educational experience for for their customers and makes it a better experience for them as well. So I will stop lecturing and let's move forward.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. This is Vice Chair Ontiveras, um, or excuse me, Chair Ontiveras.
But Madam Chair, let me say, other than that, I think this is really a great project. I have driven by that so many times and just wish that it didn't look so sad. And the fact that someone is bringing it back. It is great and I'm sure that there's going to be a strong educational historic. And I am hoping tribal educational component to this. And I think it's a really great project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Uh, this is Chair Ontiveras. I would like to draw your attention to the screen specifically number 15. The property shall be fenced with wildlife friendly fencing. Does Ms. Simmons find this appropriate or needed? Fencing exists?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I think that's a great condition there. This property is in a wildlife movement zone for many species. Uh, pronghorn, eagles, all kinds of things. And there are definitely a lot of pronghorn in the area and something that's really important to pronghorn is fencing that they can safely pass under in their case. So yes, I absolutely think there should be wildlife friendly fencing uh, around this parcel. If they do want fencing, I believe Mr. Schwartz mentioned to me that there is existing fencing along the north edge where it borders with Whoopatke and that would probably be National Park Service fencing. And, um, but for the, for the other edges of the parcel, I, if there is fencing, it should absolutely be wildlife friendly.
Okay, and Ms. Simmons, I would also, as you see us as the applicant going through these conditions. Are there any that concern you or that you do not feel are appropriate or relevant to this development?
No, I, I have nothing to add to what other Commissioners have said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Simmons, I would like to ask you, I see you unmuted, but I would like to ask you to weigh in on this wildlife friends, uh, wildlife friendly fencing, please, that we're discussing.
Yes, I think there should be wildlife friendly fencing.
Okay. Oh, you know what? I you know what? I apologize for that because it was you that was talking and I was actually okay, I am sorry for that confusion. And Mr. Short, is the fencing on the north side of the property? Is that on national forest fencing?
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. So I think that the entire property and the applicant may be able to chime in on this. There is historic fencing there that they were considering, I think, making some upgrades to. And I think for the most part, it consists of there are old railroad ties and and then not quite chain link, but something similar between around the entire property. So considering its proximity to the highway, I didn't originally see that as something, I, I guess I should have talked more with Ms. Simmons about the wildlife friendly fencing aspect of it. But I just wanted to let the Commission understand what fencing is there and then what we'll be asking the applicant to do to that fencing.
Okay, and I do understand that and I do appreciate Ms. Simmons' input on this. Uh, that is valuable. So what we're going to do as Commissioners right now, because it sounds, um, it sounds like really everyone, you know, it's a great, everyone thinks that it's a pretty good idea. Um, I, I don't want to over characterize there, but we do need to go through these conditions uh, one by one and make sure that the Commissioners are all on board for adding the additional ones. So Mr. Schwartz, can you please start at the top and scroll through?
Sure, Madam Chair. So right now I have the screen at the beginning of the new condi- or the standardized conditions that I think were developed primarily by Commissioner Best that the Commission was looking at wanting to add. The conditions 12 and above are those that you've already seen in your packet. The only changes that I've made to those are two and four, as Commissioner Wilson noted about having the proper name for Summit Fire and Medical District. So I've added those. So I didn't know if we wanted to start then at what would be the new condition 13.
Yes, yes, that's what we're going to do. And how we're going to do this is condition number 13, if any Commissioner, um, is opposed to adding this condition, I would like you to uh, raise your hand or unmute, please.
Madam Chair, this is Jess McNeely with Staff. One, one thing you had asked earlier that staff assist in identifying where any of these conditions are redundant to what is required in the ordinance by code. If you'd still like, we, we can assist with that as well. If you would like that input in this process as well.
Yes, I would. In fact, let's start with that. Are any of the proposed conditions by Commissioner Best? Are any of those, are any of his duplicating conditions that are already in the staff report? If so, which ones?
Yes, staff report item number five and the fencing in Commissioner Best are duplicated.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Wilson, um, so staff's condition number five is just about maintaining perimeter fencing. It doesn't specify anything about wildlife friendly fencing. Which again, I, I don't believe the applicant has that. It's, I don't think it's meeting the wildlife friendly standard now. So I think it's good. Well, I guess it's a good point. We could remove this, uh, number five and then we could leave it to be the wildlife friendly fencing. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that wa- and that will accomplish what we're trying to accomplish and that is also approved by Ms. Simmons.
Right, and, and I did, sorry, sorry. Um, I did remove the helicopter, the helipad condition. I did, I looked through the others and I didn't see anything in particular unless other staff has anything to add to that. Maybe the landscape plan already has an invasive, invasive weed portion to it. I can't recall offhand.
The, the standards of the landscape, the landscape portion of the zoning ordinance does require as a part of your landscape plan that which would be required for this commercial development and commercial zoning. The zoning ordinance does require that a landscape plan include weed mitigation and, and maintain weed removal.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. So I've deleted that one. Storage facilities shall be approved by staff. That's pretty much we do, do that. So I think that that would be maybe redundant. The others, I think are not sort of the typical what staff does and up to the Commission's discretion.
Okay, um, so we're looking at removing the storage facility number 22. Uh, Commissioner Clifford, please go ahead.
On the storage facilities onsite shall be approved by staff. I would leave that in there because we had the property up off of I don't know if it was in Red Lake or where it was, where they had all the buildings that were not approved. And staff found them when they went up to post the property. Storage facilities onsite shall be approved by staff because if they build a, a storage building on the site prior to coming for the CUP or the change and it has not been permitted by the county, the staff would see that during that time.
Okay, Commissioner Best, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I, I'd point out that in a perfect world, after two years, somebody's going to go out from the county and walk through this property and check everything. We don't live in a perfect world. It's really hard for county staff to keep up with everything it's supposed to do. So it could be that there's some duplication in, in these, uh, like the weeds. But what we're trying to do is point out to the applicant that we really care about this. I mean, is anybody going to go out there and, and check the landscaping? Uh, I kind of doubt it. If, if this comes back in five years to us, then staff will go out. But if it's an administrative renewal, no one will go out, I don't think. And so I don't mind having a few extra conditions just to say to the applicant, we want you guys to be successful. We want you to fit in well with the county and we, this is something that we really care about. So I'll just say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Chair Ontiveras. I, I think we have a philosophical difference here and one that we as a Commission will have to address separately, I think. Um, rather than drag it out here. Um, so I'll, I'll try to be brief. Um, it, it appears that we're trying to get into enforcement of things that have absolutely nothing to do with planning and zoning. And I'm not sure where we would draw the line if that's where we're going. If we're going to say storage facilities onsite should be approved by staff, then we should also say um, any new hotels and restaurants you want to build should also be approved by staff. All of those are required to be approved by staff and you know, we can't anticipate every possible scenario here and trying to put conditions in here that would anticipate all of them would make this completely unworkable. So, um, I, I, I think there are some things that are really good ideas that I, you know, I, I, I respect our forest as much as any of us. I hike it every day um, and spend time out there and want to see it maintained. I'm just not sure that any of these things that we're suppo- we're, we're suggesting here have actually demonstrated any, any success. Um, and so we're, we're just putting things on paper and asking people to do them that we don't even know if they work. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Commissioner Wilson for that. Um, I have listened to the discussion tonight amongst Commissioners. I have on, I have heard Commissioner Best and Commissioner Ruggles on explanation, if you will, how this has evolved because of the situations that we have seen. Uh, one of them is that we don't want it to be detrimental to properties necessarily around it. So this is kind of a preemptive strike, if you will, to make sure that any development that goes in fits nicely and is not a burden to the neighbors. But I also agree, Commissioner Wilson, with your analysis that it may be a philosophical difference and that might be best handled at a different place and time. So what we're going to do now is we're going to move forward. I will also say that um, this Commission cannot be arbitrary in, um, how it treats one campground to the other campground. And I believe Commissioners Best and Ruggles were getting to the point that, um, these are the standard conditions that we pretty much tell every campground, if you're going to come in, this, this is how we're going to do it so that we're not arbitrary and we do not treat one campground developer differently than we would treat another. So with that, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask if there are any Commissioners who, after having looked at the modified conditions that Mr. Schwartz has presented, does any Commissioner have any issue with anything as it sits now? Would anyone like them reviewed one by one? Uh, I would like a show of, if, if anyone does, please raise your hand or unmute and direct us to the condition that you would like to address. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Chair Ontiveras. I, I would specify the ones addressing off-highway vehicles or ATVs or however they're detailed in here. Um, like I said, those are street legal and, and allowed to be not just on streets, but on private property and also in some public property. And so banning those here is, you know, enacting laws in effect that are not consistent with federal and state and local laws.
Um, I would like to ask staff to weigh in on this, please. Either Mr. Short or Mr. McNeely.
So, Madam Chair, this is Jess with Staff and, and I'm, and I'm certainly would, would, uh, would like it if, if Zach or Bob or or any of the other staff uh, i- is aware of anything off the top of their head. You know, we're all aware this is a, this is a ongoing public hearing, so some, uh, many of us are trying to jump around our resources on different screens as much as possible. Um, but there's, there's limited capability of that as well. OHVs if licensed would be, uh, would be street legal vehicles, um, that, that could be, that could be driven. There have been other cases, um, including cases that have made it all the way to, uh, to the board for some reason, such as a zone change. And by the way, this is a zone change. This is not a conditional use permit for a campground. This is a zone change for an RV park. And an RV park is a, is a different thing that, that has some specific standards within the zoning ordinance. Most of those are very similar, um, or actually the exact same standards as campgrounds, but RV parks actually allow more density. And, uh, and this, this, if, if approved would be commercial zoning and the RV park would be a use permitted by right. And there are performance standards, um, that we've developed in the zoning ordinance uh, that regulate, um, that regulate RV parks. As to OHVs, um, to there have been cases previously and I'm sure the Attorney's Office has been present, um, when those cases have taken place where, um, uh, OHVs being used for recreation on the site um, were prohibited. And that was, that was deemed, um, something that the county could do uh, as a part of its, of its land use regulation. Obviously, if, if OHVs are driving on any on a, uh, public road where they're legal anywhere around here, um, those are, those are legal vehicles. Um, so that's, that's, um, where, where we're at in that, that no, we can't regulate uh, overstep the state and federal government on, on how these vehicles are regulated. But however, regulating them being driven on the site, presumably for, just for, um, entertainment on the site, uh, has been, has been deemed to be able to be regulated. Does that help?
Um, it explains it for me, but I have understood that. Uh, I would like I am reading, there should be no OH, OHVs allowed except for the suppression and maintenance vehicles. And then the other one, there is, there And then the other one, there is, there is, there is no restriction. On these OHVs being taken off of the property and driven elsewhere. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so we're not prohibiting anything that they can do. It's just it's not gonna take place on the site.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wilson, does that answer your question or concern at all?
What? There are two issues here. One says OHVs shall be kept on trailers at all times on the property. Um, which means if I drive my OHV up Highway eighty-nine and turn into their parking lot, I have just violated this condition. The other condition says there shall be no HVs allowed except for fire suppression and maintenance vehicles. So once again. If I drive up the road and turn into their parking lot, I have now violated this condition. I I'm not sure why we believe these conditions need to even be here. And I believe that they're infringing on the legal rights of a licensed vehicle driver. To navigate our public roads and and properties.
Okay, now we're, this is not talking about them being off of the property. They can take them off of the property. What this was, um. It's not allowing them to be used in the RV, RV park on the property. Except for fire suppression. Basically, you can't come in. Th- this is not going to be a place where um. A group of people are gonna get together. They're going to all load their OHVs on trailers, come into this RV park. And use them in the RV park, disturbing the other residents. Does that make sense?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I don't believe that that's the intent of what these statements are making. Um, i- if they're disturbing other residents, that's up to the owners to determine whether that's allowed or not. It shouldn't be a condition for a rezoning request. If um, you know, this isn't too terribly far away from. One of the largest um off-highway vehicle um recreational areas in the entire state. So it wouldn't be um unconscionable that someone would. Um, drive their camp at that location and drive their OHVs from there to the off-road area. On the public highways. Um, both of, both twenty-one and twenty-four, and the way I read them. Would prohibit them from doing that and would cause the applicant in this case to be in in violation of these conditions.
Okay, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised. Would you please weigh in on this conversation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we're, we're in a gray zone and it's a tough one. I, I get it. This really came from Happy Jack Lodge. Uh, which rented our OHVs, was a center for OHVs. And OHVs are going out tearing up the forest. Blasting through neighborhoods in packs. Uh, causing dust, uh, you know. Running kid, little kids off the road uh without any, without any way to control the situation. And so this is an attempt to try to. Uh, exert some control and tamp things down. We can't uh tell a a street legal OHV where it can go and where it can't go, I don't think. But a lot of OHVs are not street legal. And. I'm open to any suggestions. I mean, of course, we're open to suggestions about how to make this better. But what we're trying to do is. Limit the potential damage. To adjacent properties caused by large groups of OHVs that all of us have run into these days in the forest. And the Forest Service doesn't know what to do about them. Really, no one knows what to do about them. So we're again trying to get. The applicant to develop a culture. That takes responsibility for. The applicant's impact. On o- off-site land. And it's um, it's a tricky business. There isn't a whole lot of precedent for it. And this is the list that we've come up with to do it. To just say, oh, it's not our business. Or it's not the applicant's business, in my opinion, is completely wrong. Because that means it's no one's business. No one, neither public nor private uh landowners have the staff. And the resources to take care of this business. And so this is our attempt to develop a culture where. Everybody says, okay, what is their impact on the land? How do we protect it? How do we enjoy it? How do we use it? How do we make money on it? But how do we protect it as well? So, uh. I'd certainly be open to suggestions and, but I'm also very comfortable with what we've got here. It basically says, don't let OHVs run rampant.
Um, Commissioner Bass, this is Chair Antiveris. Um, when you were talking right now about the genesis of these particular. On conditions, it did stem from a situation at Happy Jack Lodge. Do you feel that that, that they are relevant in this case? I I actually said, let's see what what it, what actually applies to this case. Do you feel that the, that specifically number fourteen? Um, actually applies to this case based on on Commissioner Wilson's. Comments that this is in an area that is very widely used for that. And this could be something where somebody would be in this RV park for the specific reason of. Perhaps using the OHV at that location.
Well, I think the location, so there's, there's locations and locations. One location is a national monument. Uh, another location is the adjacent National Forest and the state land. OHV shouldn't be in the National Forest, uh, in the National Monument. They shouldn't be on the state land. I don't know what the conditions are in the National Forest. There are probably roads that are appropriate. Uh, for OHVs, but there's nobody out there making sure OHVs stay on those roads. I believe what Commissioner Wilson is talking about is the OHV area. Near Sunset Crater, which is super, you know, that's, that's great. That's a sort of a sacrifice zone for OHVs, and that's appropriate.
Okay, let me ask this. Do you, do you feel on that? Do you feel that these conditions could, when we're talking about educating the people? That are going to be coming into the information that is going to be given to the um people staying there? Do you feel that a better way to handle it in this case might be education of OHV and where they can go? Uh, basically, stay out of the National Monument. Uh, you can't go on state land. Do, would it be better to approach it that way in this case? Make it more unique to this case?
We're already doing that.
Yeah, I I would, I would say uh. Yeah, I I'm, I'm sort of okay with that. I would say, I would rather say. Uh, we can't, you know, if you, if you have an OHV, you can bring it here. Um, you can drive on the property with, if it's street legal, you can drive in. We can't regulate that. If it's not street legal, keep it on your trailer. Don't have a bunch of OHVs roaring around the property. And this is where you can take your OHV. Uh, we'll, we'll inform you, this is, you know, at kind of the property, if you get out there and look around, you're not gonna see the property lines. I don't think. You might see a fence. So it's important that this communication go on, that this is not wild and woolly OHV land and. You know, I, I, I'm in the forest myself a lot. Things have changed. Suddenly, there are these. Flocks of OHVs that, you know, it used to be three-wheelers going twenty miles an hour. And now it's these razors with roll cages going fifty miles an hour. And that's what we're reacting to. I don't have a perfect answer for this. I'm trying to establish a culture of being responsible. Uh, uh, public land users. How do we do that? This was the answer we came up to at at Happy Jack. If uh, if we decide that doesn't apply here, I'm okay with that. As long as we have a good educational program. And we, and we kind of understand what we're trying to do. We, we, we understand that. We can't just, we can't just say, oh, it's not the applicant's problem. It's, it's the county sheriff's problem. It's the Forest Services' problem. Because that's simply not realistic. It's our problem as a community. And how do we treat folks who don't? How do we educate folks who don't understand the ecology, how delicate it is? Um, how little, you know, we're basically a desert with some plants. And we can, and we can get lit on fire any, in any, any minute in the spring.
Right.
There's a lot of educating to do here and and getting the OHV folks to just stop and think. That's what I'm trying to do.
Right, and I, and I absolutely understand that. Uh, I do think though that Commissioner Wilson has a point in that. If the developer themselves don't mind having OHVs. On the property and they want to manage that. On, is that our place to say, no, you can't do it?
Well, we decided it wasn't Happy Jack because, in fact. There were uh squads of OHVs tearing up the neighborhoods. And. That was the fact. In this case, you know, it's a, it's a new development. And so. My intention would be to try to develop a, an educational uh culture sensitive to. The ecology of Northern Arizona and not get to a point where we have. The problem. If this is, if there's a better way to do it, great.
Okay, okay, and I see what you're saying. Vice Chair Burton, I see your hand raised. Thoughts, please?
Yeah, um, I think seventeen is sufficient, number seventeen, because this is not Happy Jack. There aren't um development subdivision neighborhoods in the area. It's surrounded by open land and they're not gonna be disturbing anyone within the property. I think that we can leave that up to the property owner. Um, and I think that as long as they, you know. And I agree with the education. We need to provide the education so that they don't go tearing through areas that they shouldn't. Especially if they're culturally sensitive areas or geograph, geologically sensitive areas. But um, I don't think we need those other two conditions because this isn't the same situation.
Right, and when you, when you say other two, can you be specific?
The two that are highlighted.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one and twenty-four.
Okay, how about eighteen?
Uh, can you go back up?
Yeah.
Well, if it requires a CUP, then it's redundant and it doesn't need to be there.
Okay. All right, so. On, I am for, this is my personal opinion. We are in commission discussion here, but I believe that educating in this case. On, is appropriate. I think that we can start there. I do believe that Commissioner Wilson has a point. That if the developer does not have a problem with OHVs being and going. In. The RV park, I don't know that really it's appropriate for this commission to say, no, you can't do it. Uh, I do, I have a lot of respect for uh. The rights of the developer and what they feel is best for uh, for what they're trying to do. So I am comfortable, and that's why I suggested it. Perhaps we start with education in this case. On, I'm gonna go ahead, uh, let's see, what we're gonna do. Vice Chair Burton, do you have any other comments uh regarding that? Re- regarding anything, cuz I'm gonna go through this list one more time. You're saying remove twenty-one and twenty-four, remove eighteen? These are your comments and just leave it at the education. And was that in number seventeen, Mr. Schwartz? I believe it was.
Sorry, that was eight, eighteen is the motor vehicle rentals that requires the CUP anyway.
Yeah, so, I I would say for me that that covers it. We're, we're asking them to provide the, the knowledge of the area and where they can go. If it's redundant, I don't think it needs to be there cuz the, the, like, number eighteen requires a CUP. And since there's no um people living like in neighborhoods right around it, I don't think that twenty-one and twenty-four are appropriate.
Okay, okay, so do you have any other comments other than that?
Nope.
Okay, and then, and was I understanding you correctly that with that? You can make the findings of fact necessary to make a recommendation for approval on this?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, you're up. Thoughts, please?
Okay, I will have to agree with uh Commissioner Burton on this one. Um, I think her suggestion is quite appropriate. Uh, I know what the area is like up there. For one thing, it is not exactly an off-road paradise. Um, and I can attest to that. Uh, I I rode off-road vehicles for over thirty years all over the state. Um. That was a while ago, but nevertheless, uh, I am familiar with some of the problems uh and some of the requirements. Vehicles um for operation uh uh, even in the National Forest. There is a requirement that uh off-road vehicles comply with the uh state licensing and insurance requirements. Doesn't get enforced very often, but nevertheless, uh, to make a blanket statement that they're all legal is, is not correct. If they're street legal, um, then you can operate the vehicle, drive onto the private property and off. Uh, I would agree with that. I think the suggestions uh for elimination of uh some of the uh conditions uh. As suggested by our vice chair are appropriate. I also appreciate uh Rob Wilson's sentiment on those. And uh, the other comment I would make is that uh. One of the things when we updated the zoning ordinance, and one of the things that uh we wanted to do with that. Was to allow the flexibility of the commission in making determinations like this. And in a case like this, I think that uh these are appropriate changes to the conditions. Uh, it is a relatively small facility. Um, it is, does not lend itself well to creating uh a motocross track on-site. I realize that's a little bit of hyperbole, but nevertheless, that's the kind of thing that uh we could be looking at uh in other instances. So that's my thinking on this. And otherwise, I can make the findings. Uh, and I can make the findings for the changes in the adoption of conditions as proposed. By uh Commissioner Burton.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. And so just to be, just so I understand. You're in favor of removing conditions twenty-one, twenty-four, and number eighteen and modifying seventeen?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Williams?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of these most recent modifications and paring this down a little bit. Um, and I do feel like. Um. Requiring the wildlife-friendly fencing all around the property is gonna. Just sort of help contain. Certainly anything with wheels from just going willy-nilly into the. Uh, monument or the National Forest or the state, so. That, I think I'm happy with where it is right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Clifford?
I like it the way it's written right now. I can make the findings on this.
Okay, when you say right now, you mean without taking out twenty-one, twenty-four, and eighteen?
No, with the, the way he has to remove those.
Got it.
The way it's stated right now, I should say, not written, stated right now.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Commissioner Best?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, could, um. Let's see, can we look at thirteen, um? So I I can, I can live with whatever you guys come up with. Uh, I would live with the way it is, obviously, but uh. But I'm I'm good, and uh, I love working with you and respect your opinions. Um. Property shall be fenced with wildlife fencing. Sign to prevent trespass on the state or private land. I. Don't think we can include, let's see, state? Um. Should we put state, federal, or private land, I I think that you. Would be prohibited from going into the monument. By jumping over the fence, but not the forest, and I'm not sure about that. What's the most appropriate to put in there? We we would prefer that, um, so, so what I would prefer to happen is that. The applicant meet with. The representatives from the state land, the national forest, and the national monument. And just have a mature discussion about what the impacts may be and where folks should go. And then in inform the customers where they should go. I don't know that you can prevent people from just walking into the national forest. I know you can't. But I'm not sure about the monument. Can, can you put a no trespassing sign in front of the monuments? I'm not sure.
Or maybe, maybe it just say to prevent trespass and leave it at that.
Well, I think state or private land, uh, you're not supposed to trespass on those.
Right, which is.
Trespassing a state, private. And federal lands as appropriate or something like that?
You have to pay to go into the monument, so you cannot trespass on it.
Yeah. Well, why don't we say trespass on the state? Private or federal land, state, private, or federal land as appropriate. And then it's kind of up to the applicant to to have those conversations and figure out what is appropriate. We're trying to get the applicant in in involved here in creating. Uh. A si- uh, a, a culture and education system. Uh, that enhances the customer experience at the same time. Mitigates negative impacts on the land around them. That looks good to me, and and I'm fine with the rest of the uh. Getting rid of the O H V stuff, if that's what you guys want to do, fine.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, thank you, everyone, for your patience on this, and I apologize for. Being the thorn in everyone's side at my very first meeting, um, one other question that I have is. Condition, existing condition number eleven. Um, says all outdoor lighting shall meet residential standards of the zoning ordinance. Um, but isn't this a commercial operation and is there a reason why we're saying? The lighting has to meet residential, not commercial?
Uh, I, okay, staff, I would like to, uh. Have your comments on that, because this is not going to be residential if it's rezoned.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and Commissioner Wilson, so typically. Um, this is the standard that we put in. Campgrounds that are in the general zone, so that's typically a single-family residential zone and it interfaces directly. Uh, with single-family residential properties often, um. In this area, because of the public land that's surrounding. Uh, I personally thought that it might be a good idea to do as well, I don't think the applicant is even looking to. Light up the property in a manner that's typical for um. Commercial properties, but um, if the commission wishes to just have it say that it. Meets the commercial standards or just remove the residential standard part of it, um. That that could be something that you decide as well.
Uh, Commissioner.
Mr. Schwartz, just to follow a question on that then, um, they would be required to meet the standards of the lighting. Ordinance regardless. Um, whether this was here or not, but the way it would apply is because. It's a commercial facility and there are commercial buildings on the. Um, highway side of this. Um, property. They would be entitled to commercial lighting. Standards, is that correct?
Uh, Commissioner Wilson, so not as written. If we remove the residential part or this condition altogether, they would be entitled to the normal commercial lighting allowances, which are more.
And and the buildings in the front that they, I I guess one of them, they're planning on some type of a retail facility, is that correct?
That's right.
The, so that would probably need to be commercially lit.
I think the real difference, and I see Commissioner Ruggles' hands up, and he's very knowledgeable on the subject. Um. Is the amount of lumens that's that are provided. And I don't think that the applicant is gonna look to light up their property in the way that typical commercial. Lighting is allowed, but um, so I don't think it would, this would prohibit them from having wall pack type lighting. On their commercial um structure, that sort of thing, um. Uh, it's more of a lumen cap issue in my mind, uh, but I'll I'll defer to the commission, let's hear from Mr. Ruggles.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wilson has a very good point, I think, uh, to say that. They would have to comply with residential standards, one, uh, maybe considered arbitrary. Um, this is lighting zone three, uh, I would like to remind everyone of that. The other thing is that. I think it would be sufficient to say that uh it, uh, the lighting should comply with the requirements of. Uh, section four point three, the lighting ordinance. Um, the revised lighting ordinance is going to result in a considerable reduction. Uh, in the amount of commercial lighting allowed. And uh, so. Based on both of those factors, uh, I think, because we are dealing with commercially zoned property. Um, that in my mind, I know, uh, would be arbitrary. Very simply because we are creating a different standard than what is already existing in the zoning ordinance. Uh, it's one thing, uh, if this was worked out ahead of time as it. Has been in the past with other similar applications, uh, wherein the applicant agrees to that. But um, this is something that is rather new for them at uh this meeting right now. So, uh. I think that it would be appropriate to, um. I think the uh lighting, um, make it uh. In accordance with the lighting ordinance, which is uh section four point three, uh, for commercial. Um, I know the standards are fairly high in terms of lighting right now with that, but. Um. Nevertheless. Um. That's what the ordinance is, and uh, I think we need to comply with what is in the zoning ordinance. If it were general, you know, we could make the requirements as they were originally written, but. Uh, we're changing the zoning. So, we'll leave, I will leave it at that for the rest of the commission.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, this is, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, on. Yeah, if this is going to be rezoned to commercial. The applicant, in my opinion, would have the right to have the lighting for that zone. Um, I, so I'm completely on board with the removal of the words residential standards. On, and go and then just leaving it at zoning ordinance section four point three, because then that would allow the applicant. Uh, if it's own commercial, that would give them the right to have commercial lighting on in their in their facility. So. Go ahead.
Chair Aunt Farris, there is one other thing that uh we have done. And uh, I think Commissioner Wilson is very familiar with this one because of um, the lighting um. That uh, he was required to have, and that is the loophole in the current uh, uh. Lighting ordinance, and that is for uh lighting under. Uh, twenty-five hundred uh lumens per luminaire. So, um, I don't know if, uh, considering the location and the type of use, uh. That um, we would want to address that, uh, we have said that uh. In other um, zone changes and C U Ps that lighting. That is under twenty-five hundred uh lumens, uh, should be. Uh, have a color temperature of twenty-seven hundred K or less. Um, as a matter of fact, I think we've got, uh. And and of course, this is something new for the applicant, I hate to bring this up. You know, right at the meeting when there was uh no possibility for them to discuss it. Uh, with staff and pre-app or in the development of the conditions, but uh. This is one thing that has been a bone of contention, uh, especially uh with uh. People who are amateur and professional astronomers and the Naval Observatory. And uh, it is something that uh I am. Almost absolutely sure will be addressed in the update of the lighting ordinance. And by the way, one other thing in addition to that is that. This does not impose uh a an undue restriction on what the applicant can use for lighting. Because uh, there is a tremendous amount of uh lighting that is amber LED, which is considerably. Uh, lower than twenty-seven hundred K, uh, available in the marketplace and available for uh very reasonable cost. Uh, as a matter of fact, no more so than uh, uh, most of the lighting that uh is used now commonly.
Okay, so Commissioner Ruggles, look at. Um, you know what, we've got, we've got that now one listed as condition number one.
Yeah, that's uh, that is it, uh, that is a condition that we have added, uh. Uh, a number of times in the recent past, and it poses no undue burden on the applicant in terms of lighting.
Okay, so as written, where it's like number nine, all outdoor lighting shall meet zoning ordinance section four point three. Lighting permit shall be obtained prior to any installation, and then in the yellow. That. Is appropriate and does not create any undue burden?
That, that is it exactly.
Okay. Alrighty, Commissioner Wilson? Do you have any problems with that?
No, they just extracted that directly from the ordinance and that we told them in the first paragraph they had to comply with, and that's fine. Um, so, as modified now, I can fully support the findings. For this. Rezone.
Okay, uh, okay, I'm gonna be, um, oh man, I'll tell you what, doing these meetings from home is fun, I got cats that need my attention. Um, hold on one second. Alright, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I'm back. Uh, what I would like to do, because there has been so much, uh, so many changes and conversations on. On these conditions, the modification, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start at the very top. How many do we have now, Mr. Schwartz?
Madam Chair, altogether. We have twenty-five, but there was discussion about removal of. Three of those.
Okay.
Should I do that now?
I I would, for the sake of that, let's remove twenty-one, twenty-four, and number eighteen now. And then. Okay, so did they all automatically re? Renumber there?
It's not a fun process, but I think I've got it.
Okay, no, no, you're fine, you're fine.
So now altogether, Madam Chair, there are twenty-two.
Okay, so can you please scroll up to number one, and together as a commission, we're gonna look at every single one of these. And make sure that this is what we want. Okay, so, um. I'm reading them, everyone read them, if anyone has um, a problem with any of them. Uh. Raise your hand, so let's read number one, uh, numbers one through three now individually. Okay, um, can you move up to number five through, yeah, okay? Okay, go ahead and bump to the next three. Okay, let's go ahead and bump up to the next three. Okay, stop at eleven. Um. Honestly, when I read number fifteen, applicant shall consult with nearby public land managers concerning off-site impacts. On. Okay, so what do they do, you know, so the applicant consults with them, okay, so I'm the applicant. I go and consult with the nearby public land uh manager concerning off-site impacts, and then what do you want me to do with that? Uh, Commissioner, or Mr. Schwartz, like, if if the applicant asked you that on number fifteen? What would you tell them?
Madam Chair, I think I understand the reasoning behind it. Is to just figure out any site-specific. Issue that there might be with that particular land use and. Maybe the Forest Service nearby, you know, are people creating social trails, et cetera, as far as when it comes to. If I'm looking to enforce. Um, this condition, or am I looking for documentation about it, um? I'm not sure that I have really great direction on what I would be requiring or what I would be enforcing.
Um, Commissioner Bass, can you weigh in on this?
Yeah, this is, this is another tough one where it's just a matter of a. Not having enough time to do what we ought to do. Um. It is reasonable that, uh. An applicant who's going to bring people. To a property adjacent to. A national monument and a national forest. And state land should consult with those entities. Let them know what's going on and get their input. Is, is there an archaeological site right over the fence? That they absolutely should not, should inform people about and not let them go into? Uh, are these entities worried about social trails? Are there wildlife issues? It's just basically almost a courtesy matter to sit down. With them. Get their input, and then again, from a positive point of view. We're not trying to. be punitive here, but from a positive point of view, help the applicant enhance the experience of the customer and protect the adjacent land in a positive way. So by, by sitting down with these folks, the applicant could then do a better job of educating, at the least, educating his customers about the land around them. What is, what, what, what are, what do those folks care about? Why is it so precious? Why can't I go over that fence? I'm an American citizen. That's my land. Just, just include them in the conversation. And maybe you just ask the applicant to send you a letter that says I'm, I called over there and let them know who I was, and you know what, half the time, it's pretty hard to hear back from them because they're so busy. That's the point here. So I, I think that we want the applicant to reach out and see how the, give, give these adjacent landowners a chance to react to this new entity on their border. If they say, hey, I don't have time to deal with you, then include that in the letter. And that's what's going to happen half the time.
Well, I'm looking at number seventeen, I'm sorry, number eighteen, where it says applicant shall provide map showing appropriate and inappropriate areas for off-site recreation, including road and trail maps. On, it seems like fifteen and eighteen kind of go hand in hand there, but they seem disconnected to me.
You could make them the same one and we just, we, we want the applicant to take some responsibility for educating their customers about how to interact with the land around them.
Okay.
Because we've seen what happens when, when no effort is made.
Okay, how do, um, the other commissioners are hearing this conversation. I feel that fifteen and eighteen belong together because fifteen without eighteen, it, it just seems disconnected to me. If we said applicant shall consult with nearby public land manager, managers concerning off-site impacts, period. Applicant shall provide map showing appropriate. To me, those two fit together. Can, getting the thumbs up from Vice Chair Burton, does any commissioner have an issue saying, no, Tammy, I, I think you're way off on that. Commissioner Wilson?
Just give me the thumbs up, agree completely.
Okay, oh, okay, so there's the thumbs up. So then I'm not getting any feedback from Commissioner Ruggles. I'm not getting feedback. Why don't we make that change then, Mr. Schwartz? Combine fifteen? All right, so now let's read fifteen. Okay, so sixteen. Seventeen K, go ahead and bump up, Mr. Schwartz? Okay, number twenty-two, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz, will you please go back to the landscaping one? Because I believe that it was in there. Where is that landscaping one? There we are, okay. Landscaping install zoning ordinance, and we've been to get, oh, shall we approve concurrent? Yeah, a weed mitigation plan shall be approved. Doesn't that, doesn't, can't we remove twenty-two with the wording in the other one?
Absolutely, I think we can.
Okay. Okay, so, and then can you show us that condition, Mr. Schwartz? Again, just the landscaping one. Yeah, okay. Now with these, I am now comfortable with these new set, with this new set of conditions. If anybody isn't, raise your hand. I'm not seeing any. I believe we're ready to move to a motion in a second, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve Z C two-two dash zero-two-one as amended this evening.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to make a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors on Z C twenty-two dash zero-two-one. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair Antiviris, and I also vote aye. Z C twenty-two zero-two-one will move forward to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. And our final case this evening is Z C twenty-three zero-zero-one.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think Bob will be getting his screen shared here. Bob, go ahead. If you're able, Z C twenty-three zero-one is a zone change request from the G Zone to M H P Manufactured Home Park. And I see that Bob is now sharing his screen. Yep, you got the, the PowerPoint up, Bob. So please, Bob, go ahead and give the presentation. You may be muted, Bob.
There it is. Yeah, I had to make sure and do that. Can everyone hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Grand Canyon Tiny Home Village Zone Change. Okay, in this case, the property owner is Live the Dream Development LLC of Gilbert, Arizona. The applicant is Ryan Scott of Aspire Fund LLC, Gilbert, Arizona. Representative is Isaac Block of Civil Design and Engineering, that's C D and E of Flagstaff, Arizona. Existing zoning is G, general, and the proposed zoning is M H P Manufactured Home Park. And the size of the property is forty-point-two-eight acres. And this is the request, zone change from general to M H P on a forty-point-two-eight acre parcel for the development of sixty-two R B certified tiny home spaces. So these are, so I'll, I'll just mention that the tiny home definition in the zoning ordinance is not the same as R B certified. So that's what the applicant would like to recall these, so we're fine with that, but they, but they are different things. In the M H P zone, only an R B certified, RVs or manufactured homes are allowed. So in this case, the sixty-two would be broken down into twenty short-term rentals, twenty-one long-term rentals, and twenty-one lot lease sites. That's where you buy your own tiny home and put, and place it on the property and, and pay for leasing a site. Adventities include a playground, dog park, pathways, gazebos, and et cetera. And this zone change also has a a request or a proposal for a fire station on a point-nine acre portion of the property. That portion of property would be cut off, and that would require conditional use permit for the fire station in this zone. So this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see the subject property right north of High Grove Road as you come out of Valley or Grand Canyon Junction. And this is an aerial photo of the subject property. I'll just point out that this is High Grove Road, and the applicant is actually proposing coming in from this road. And I'll, I'll show you the access easement for that later. They're not proposing to access the state highway as a primary access, only as an emergency access, although the fire station would access the highway as a primary access. This is a photograph showing the subject property. You're looking east from the edge of Highway sixty-four. And in this case, for, for the zoning standards, the applicant has not provided any kind of landscaping, lighting, signage plans ahead of time. They just indicate that they will meet the standards of the M H P zone at the time of development, which basically they get approved for the zone change when they come out of their application or their building permit for the manufactured home park. Then staff would check it all at that time, and it would meet the standards. And as I said before, the, the fire station would require a conditional use permit, so the commission would see that again later. This is a site plan showing the subject property. This is, the applicant describes it as a conceptual map, but pretty close to what they would plan on doing. Again, primary access is from the back. And then a secondary or emergency access is from the highway only. This makes it a lot easier to get an encouragement from Arizona Department of Transportation if you aren't having a primary access. In fact, they probably would not allow a primary access from that location. So in this, if you look at the map, it does delineate the different type, types of uses. This is long-term rentals up here, short-term rentals here, and lot lease sites back in this area. This shows a very large proposed wastewater system. And you can see a dog park here. You can see a couple of playgrounds. You can see various gazebos spread out through the site. You can see a path around this area and through the middle, and there's paths all through the, the site as well. And of course, the fire station. So this is the Grand Canyon ranches that this is an unsubdivided land subdivision. And the state of Arizona allows you to divide, divide a property as long as the acreage of parcels is thirty-six acres or, or larger, and that's what was, was done in this case many, many years ago. So you can see this would be High Grove Road coming through here. That is actually a dedicated public right-of-way, not maintained by the county, however. And this is Highway sixty-four, and you can see there's a sixty-foot access easement that goes up here and accesses this, which is the subject property, minus a little piece that got cut out at some point. Not sure how that happened. The adjacent property over here is Clear Skies Development. And they are currently using this road. I think sometimes there's a road there, but it, it's not, it's not maintained or improved very well at this point. This is a, an example, just a kind of a sample of what types of REVA standard RVs they'd be placing on the property. And there obviously can be things that are a lot different than this, and, and things that are, you know, a variety of different types of structures similar to this. In terms of utilities, the water would be hauled and stored in water tanks on the site and delivered through water lines. So they are putting in-ground water lines in, so you can hook right up to the water system. And I do have to mention that right adjacent to this site is one of the, one of the few wells in the valley area. In fact, the, the site right to the south contains a, a well and a, a water tank, water storage tank. It has almost half a million gallons, so there is water available nearby. Wastewater would also be developed on the site. There'd be a large wastewater system, as I showed you on the site plan. And that would also be an in-ground sewer lines to each of the spaces. A P S would provide electricity, and High Country Fire and Rescue would provide fire service. And within the next few years, they plan on building a fire station right here on this site. So that will be a real important for the valley area. In terms of citizen participation, the applicant held a virtual meeting on January fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Two neighbors attended the meeting. They did express some concerns about short-term rentals, but they did otherwise support the development. In fact, the people that went, that came to the meeting were the owners of that water, the, the well next door. And they actually were very enthusiastic about this and its ability to provide housing for the area, which is sorely needed. So wanted to look at some comprehensive plan compliance. I just kind of highlighted in yellow some of the most important things. That would be that it provides affordable housing, that it provides an adequate level of services, including roads, water, and wastewater, fire protection, utilities, adequate emergency services, and emergency access routes. Tourist-related development projects. So this is a tourist-related development. It does have an element of vacation rentals. It is a well-designed community that promotes rural character. And it does imply, it does provide employee housing in and around a gateway community. The comp plan describes valley as a potential gateway community. And then I wanted to point out that this site is not actually in the valley area plan. It is an island outside of the area plan, totally surrounded by it. Excuse me, and as you can see, the, the valley area, valley is just south of here. And I wanted to point that out because the applicant did decide in their narrative to address all the policies of the valley area plan and because of this proximity. Okay, I want to go over the findings of fact for a zone change. For the first finding is the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and this ordinance. And I did point that out in a previous slide. And I'll just say the comprehensive plan supports affordable and workforce housing, public safety, and tourist-related development projects. Finding number two, change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. The proposed zone change provides needed housing and fire service with water and wastewater utilities. And the applicant would retain native vegetation and adhere to firewise practice and address weed mitigation. And then lastly, the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. And as, and the only developed properties here are the, the well site to the south. And to the east, there is the campground, so it fits very well within that, that this neighborhood. And the density here is very similar to the density at the campground. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards the recommendation of approval of Z C twenty-three zero-zero-one to the Board of Supervisors with the proposed conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Alrighty, Commissioner Bass, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Highway sixty-four is also a scenic highway, right?
Commissioner Bass, I believe, I believe it is.
Yeah, so we've got, we're in a gateway. We have a scenic highway. I'm pretty uncomfortable having no architectural plan or landscape plan. They don't have to come back, do they? For a C U P?
Commissioner Bass, no, in this case, they would meet the zoning requirements, zoning standards for the M H P zone. And that would require, I mean, they could have actually come, come to the commission with a plan and had that approved as part of the zoning, but they instead wanted to just go ahead and meet the standards. And those standards would require, if my memory is correct, one tree and I believe five shrubs for each of the for each of the spaces. And I think there may be some more For each of the uh spaces, and I think there may be some more standards as well, but that is what they wanted to. To do is just meet the standards for this zone. And and although there is water available next door, obviously hauling water, that's a, that's a big. That that's a difficult thing, especially when you have to water a lot of landscaping. There's a provision in landscape code that allows them to use cacti and blue trees, so that might be something they they might want to do.
Well, I can tell you that since this is a scenic highway and it's a gateway. To the Grand Canyon. Uh, I'm pretty uncomfortable. Without knowing what it's actually going to look like. I mean, uh, you know, uh. A motorhome park is not the most beautiful thing to be seen. Uh, it could be. It could meet standards. Technically, and be kind of an eyesore on. A scenic highway and a gateway community. So I just uh. You know, especially with the landscaping, it is, you know, hauling water and keeping plants alive out there. Uh, that's hard duty. I'm just, I'm just really uncomfortable. I would much rather, you know, since it's a scenic highway and a gateway, and these are two things. That uh in the comprehensive plan that we're that we're trying to maintain as. Uh, mainly maintain the character of of our community. And this is what, you know, millions of people drive, literally millions of people drive by every year going to the Grand Canyon. Uh, something that made, that met basic standards of a motorhome park and looked like a funky motorhome park. Uh, would not be okay, in my opinion, so I. I don't know if I'm going to get anywhere on this uh. Without more of a plan. Uh, I also amazingly, you won't believe this, I have a list of sixteen uh things here that uh conditions. That we might want to review as well to see which ones apply. Some of them have been covered, some not. Some don't so much apply in this location. But we might want to uh. Include a few because how many of these units are going to be just overnight?
Uh, roughly a third, about, I believe about twenty of them.
Okay, so we got a a fair number of folks just coming through overnight and. Basically, it's like an RV park, um. So we might want to include some of these um. Same conditions, go over the same list. But I I I'm just very uncomfortable considering where this is. I'm uncomfortable not having a clue what it might look like.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Best and and Bob, this is this is Jess with Community Development Staff. I I will point out that the site plan we're we're looking at, and thanks Bob for leaving the site plan up here. Um, per the zoning ordinance, when an applicant uh makes a request for a zone change or a conditional use permit. Um, they have to submit a site plan. The site plan is considered conceptual. Um, and the um, the development has to be built in substantial conformance, you know, once things are engineered. Um, some of the site plan might move, you know, a few feet one way or the other, and and this is a pretty good conceptual site plan. Um, they didn't submit a separate landscape plan and have indicated they would meet the landscape code. Um, proportion of the zoning ordinance, which is significant, although I will point out on their site plan. Um, along the frontage, and Bob, you you could probably move your cursor and it would show up on the screen for people. Along the frontage of Highway sixty-four, they have indicated that that is where they would go heavy with their landscaping. So I I think the applicant here has probably considered, and I'm sure when the applicant speaks uh to the commission, they can point this out as well. Um, it they they are demonstrating in my mind with a conceptual site plan. Um, that they will A, meet code, and they'd be required to meet code regardless. Um, and B, uh, that that they are, that they are indicating they will um uh put. Uh, emphasis on their landscaping along that Highway sixty-four frontage. I'm sure uh to address exactly what you what your what your concern is, Commissioner Best. That um that we that we try to use some landscaping to uh screen and break up and beautify the frontage. Of uh of this development along Highway sixty-four. So I just thought I'd point that out and and hope it's of of some assistance in in discussion here.
How about elevations for uh for the store?
No, we have not, we have not gotten any elevations for the uh recreational building. It would be quite a ways from the road, but we we have, we don't have the elevations for those kinds of, those other developments.
But i- isn't there a store right on the highway?
No, this is a, this is a fire station.
Oh, that's the fire station that comes later.
And the fire station does require a conditional use permit in this zone.
Okay, well, that helps. Okay, well, let's uh carry on, see what other folks have to say. But I I would like to to bring up the uh the sixteen items uh. Four of them have already been covered. Those are the ones that were involved. And uh, see if uh any of the other ones want to be applied at this. At this location, thank you.
And Commissioner Best, I'll say that I I have uh added, I've added those to the staff report. And uh looked at some that might not apply based on our previous discussion and. Um, so I, so I can present those in any time when when the commission's ready.
Yeah, this is quite a different property, so we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Buss, and Mr. Short, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Sharon Taveras. I I noticed that on page. Two of six of the CDNE report, um, they requested a paving waiver as part of the zone change application. I didn't see that included in the staff report anywhere, so when we do get ready to to vote on this, um, I think it's important that. We make sure that we address the fact that a paving waiver is or is not included in it. Um, while um Mr. Short has this slide up, I noticed um the roads system here. Um, the the wider roads are all the um improved roads that are maintained um for emergency equipment. Um, kind of access, yet the building that is um kind of on the northeast corner there, um outside the. The waste treatment area, um which includes a laundry, um something that's oftentimes subjects to fire and dryers and things like that. Has a very narrow road that would limit access by fire apparatus to it, and I question whether that's a good idea or not. Let's see. Had a. Couple other questions. In the conditions of approval, an item number four. Um, it talks about the public safety vehicle access as being approved by the engineering supervisor. I'm new to this, and and so I apologize, but who is the engineering supervisor?
Commissioner Wilson, the engineering supervisor, well, he's John Carr, but uh what he does is he he uh like development permits. He, they look at.
They're planning and zoning.
Yep, the actually engineering, so it's the engineering division of the Community Development Department.
And and the position is, and the position is filled with a PE, and that and that's by design, so we have a PE reviewing other PE's designs.
Gotcha, okay, and then um finally on on the conditions, um condition number eleven says that. Um, it it places a five-year limit on the development of this, and I'm curious to know what the the. Logic behind that is.
I have not seen that, let's see, we're.
On page one hundred of the staff report that we received. Condition number eleven says this zone change is conditioned on a schedule to develop to be completed within.
Oh, right, okay, right, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, that, this is what we call a conditional zoning. Uh, and the 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 intention of that, it's it's in the zoning ordinance. And the intention of that is that in, if in five years, if this is not developed. As as the uh as the applicant has proposed. Then it should come back and be looked at again, because otherwise it's just an MHP zone sitting out there that never was completed. So there is a possibility at that point for it to get revert back to the original general zoning, rather than just hanging out there not being developed.
So I guess I'm not clear on the consequences um that that presents to the county or our community. Um, knowing that the applicant would have invested significant amounts of time, energy, and money, um getting to the point where he's. Um, got this application in here, um putting a time limit on it. I I I I'm not clear on on how that benefits the county.
I think if you, if you look down the road, I mean, if the applicant hasn't moved forward. And made su- some significant progress on on uh developing the manufactured home park. Within five years, then it is something that the board can look at again to say whether or not. I mean, they can, they can look at it and say, okay, well, go ahead and and increase the amount of time. Or if it, if nothing has happened at all, it's just a vacant piece of property with no development. It is possible that the board at that point could uh cause it to revert back to its original zoning, which is general. Rather than just leaving it sitting here like this without any development at all. Now, that's very rare. I haven't seen that happen. But that is something that's allowed for in the zoning ordinance for that very reason. So that uh that the development doesn't actually, you know, if it doesn't go through.
But I I guess I still haven't seen the benefit. W- w- why, how does that benefit the county? Or the the community?
Well, it's it, so right now it's general zoned. It, so we don't, the the county doesn't support speculative zoning, for example. All right, and that's where. Uh, a developer comes in and they change the zone to a nu- to a different zone, right? And the whole reason for it is just to sell the property and make more money off the property. The county likes to see developments come in like this that have a plan. And once they get through, they're going to move forward with their plan, and now, like like we've said, this is conceptual. So it may not be exactly like this, but the county likes to see a plan, so rather than. Uh, something coming in and not ever moving forward. Uh, it it's in the public interest to to bring it back and revert it back to the original zoning. If it doesn't, if it never develops. Because, I mean, you could, it could sit here for ten years, for example, and this plan is still attached to it, right? Uh, I guess someone could come in and develop it like, you know, similar to this plan. But if they really haven't done it at that point. Um, it's really uh kind of time to revert it back to the original development. It's similar to a subdivision. If you come in and you get uh preliminary plat approval for a subdivision, that only lasts for eighteen months. If you haven't achieved final plat by that time, you have to come back to the board. And explain to them why you haven't or what kind of progress you've made toward achieving final plat. Rather than a subdivision just sitting there, and it it would, uh, in the case of a subdivision. Uh, it it actually would expire and the 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 preliminary plat approval would no longer apply. So it's similar to that.
See the similarity, I I still don't see the benefit, but I I I I accept your answer, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Um, Mr. Short, this is Sharon Taveras. Can you answer his question about the concern of the roadway going to the laundry unit?
Uh, Madam Chair, that would be something that the that the fire chief would look at. And and like, like we said, this is conceptual, so if the fire chief looks at it and 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 they indicate this road's not adequate. Uh, then that that would, that would have to change. So the fire chief will take a look at this. Obviously, they're working with the fire district, the fire on on this. So they're real close with the fire chief. He is uh intending to develop a fire station here, so that would be looked at then.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Buss, do you have another question?
Yes, I do, thank you, um. So, am I looking at uh? Basically tiny homes with sheds behind them? Wha- what is the smaller structure behind each? Structure that's on the road?
Parking area and a tiny home.
Right, this is the parking area, this is the driveway.
Oh, and.
And that's the tiny home.
Okay.
And then these are different things, they may be firing, so that's, you know, that's certainly something to think about. Yeah.
I'm kind of getting into the comment stage, and maybe I shouldn't, but uh. I'd be more comfortable. You know, I I apologize that I thought that was a store, and it's going to be a firehouse, so that's going to take care of itself. Uh, I'd be more comfortable if if the two uh. Tiny homes and parking areas closest to the highway. Uh. You're looking kind of at the back of a tiny home from the highway, that's not going to be very attractive, yeah. Maybe we could get those uh moved somewhere else. And uh. Get a commitment from staff and the applicant that this is going to be heavily landscaped. To respect the scenic highway and gateway values. Um, that, you know, I could start getting more comfortable. So, I think that's for a conversation a little later in the evening, but uh, I'm thinking about that, thank you.
Commissioner Best, you might also uh note that in the landscape ordinance, it does require. Landscaping along the frontage of the highway right here, so that would still apply. Uh, it's just that for like manufactured home parks, there's a specific requirement for each. Space to have a certain amount of landscaping as well, so the other requirements of landscape ordinance apply. There's also a really good grade change from here uh down to here, but of course it would still be visible.
And it's, it's, it's dropping away as you go east?
It actually, it's, it's just that the highway's built way up. This is very flat in here, but the highway is built, is built way up.
Well, that makes it more visible, uh.
You're looking down on it, right?
Yeah, I just, I I I I know landscaping is going to be a challenge out there. We've been through this before. It, that's a hard neighborhood to grow anything, especially when you're hauling water, so. Uh, let's keep the conversation going, thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Best. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff at this time? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask if the applicant, the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. Uh, please state your name and address for the record, and uh you. If you've obviously heard the questions and comments that have already been put out. If you could address those in in your presentation, and with that, please proceed.
Sure, can you hear me? This is Ryan Scott.
Yep, we can hear you really good.
Yeah, th- thanks for the time. My address is three nine one eight East Morrison Ranch Parkway, Gilbert, Arizona, eight five. Two nine six. Appreciate the time. I know it's late for you guys, us too. Um, and and I appreciate all the time that Bob and and Jess and team have put into getting us, getting us ready to be here, so. Look, I've been working on this for a long time. It's it's my company, it's not a big corporation. We're excited not only to do a project that, you know, I want to do, and we've been working with the county on, but to bring a fire station to an area where. I own other properties and really, really need it, so. So I got my kids, you know, Chief Trotter approached us because of the project wanting to bring a fire station to the area. Super excited to partner with him for something that's really needed. When we talked with the neighbors and the Collins who own a lot of land and businesses there. The comments about the property like what we're doing, I love that we're bringing the fire station there as well, and so. Uh, we're focused on bringing RV certified tiny homes. They're custom-made. We've worked with the building department and the rest of the city to bring them into the county and other projects. Hold on, sweetie, hold on, sweetie, and and they look great, and and this is a higher-end event. All right, I I'll just say at the end, there is significant landscaping in the front. This is something that's going to be there for a long time, Commissioner Best, I totally agree with your points. It's got to look great. I drive this all the time. No concern at all about working with the city to make sure that it looks not up to code. No concern at all about working with the city to make sure that it looks not up to code, but but also great. So I'll just stop. I apologize. I could only hold the twins for so long.
Um, thank you. It's okay. I've I've been. I've been herding cats, so it's it's hard doing some of this stuff um, the way that we're doing it. So. We're all doing a good job. We're making it through this. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time? Alright, I'm not seeing any. I'm going to ask.
Ms. Chair, I'll I'll ask him a question real quick. Is he comfortable moving the uh. The two units closest to the highway back east of the road. And heavily landscaping in front there. So that the uh. View from the highway is more scenic.
Yes, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, do any, I'm going to ask again, do any commissioners have any other questions for Commissioner Wilson? Please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I would just suggest maybe not even having to move them, but turn them direct or to a. A vertical position on there that that would give him the room to then landscape between those lots and the road. Either of those options, I think. Would achieve what Commissioner Best is looking for.
I appreciate that. That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, good suggestion. Uh, any other commissioners have questions, comments for the applicant? Not seeing any. I'm going to ask if anyone in the public wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand or unmute. Okay, I'm not seeing any. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and open it up at commission discussion. On. Commissioner Best, what I would like to ask, if you're bringing in the sixteen uh, conditions, if you. To get ahead on this case, can you please look at those sixteen conditions? See which ones are relevant, which ones are not. And considering the conversation and discussion that we had on the previous case. That'll help us get a little bit ahead as we start kind of, you know, honing in on this. Uh, Vice Chair Burton, please, please go ahead and start the discussion on this case.
Um, I think it looks like a great project. Uh, they they don't look like. You know, they look like tiny homes. They don't look like RVs, and I like the fact that the uh. Overnighters are towards the back of the property away from the highway, um, because that kind of hides them regardless of what their RV might look like. Um, I I see no problems with this and I. I can make the findings for it, and I think having a fire uh, department out there. A firehouse out there, it'd be a great benefit.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I couldn't agree with Commissioner Burton more. Um, however, I am awaiting with bated breath. Uh. Commissioner Best's additional conditions on this. Uh, very simply because when I looked at this, I thought, well, let's say we've got a manufactured home park. But we also have short-term rentals. So. Uh, would it be appropriate, or can we even add conditions like that? Uh, to go with this zone change? So I I will leave it at that. Perhaps staff could answer that. The question I still have in my mind about that, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Williams?
Um, I agree with Commissioner Burton. I think it looks like a nice project and. I I can make the findings and. Um, yeah, I guess it remains to be seen what else gets added to it, but at this point. I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings. We'll see what Commissioner Best has for us.
Alright, Commissioner Best, you're up. Let's see what you've got.
Uh, well, uh, thank you. Um. Alright, uh.
And Madam Chair, I do have the findings that Commissioner Best asked inserted in the staff report. And there, I mean, so we 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 can go over those, or I could go over those a little bit, but. Uh, there were some kind of based on the last conversation that could be removed. Uh, number six up here would be removed because it'd be redundant. So Commissioner Best could start with where we are here if he would like.
Well, that, uh, okay. I I'm good with eleven, because we've got the fire issue out there. I'm good with twelve and. Number thirteen is already taken care of. Number fourteen and fifteen I'm good with. I mean, these folks are going to be out hiking and. Hopefully, those are just cookie cutter things that are, you know, hopefully, we're going to get to somewhere on this. The leave no trace is super easy right now. It's cheap and easy. And number fifteen, we need to make easy. And I will personally work on that. It is not easy now, and I doubt anybody's doing it. Um. What do you guys think about sixteen? Uh, we're not right next to anything. There's state land across the highway. And then a lot of private land. But I I I'd stay with sixteen just because it would be a service to the folks there. If they understood, you know, when you stand out there, you don't know who owns what land, so you're going to assume, oh, I can just go walking out into this private land or into the state land. But it would be a service to tell them where they can go, the nearest place they can go. To hike and drive off-road, and I don't know where that is. But I think it would be a. I would leave sixteen. And that's all I see. Seventeen, okay, we're gonna get rid of. Uh, I don't care too much about noise at the property line. Is there anybody else? Uh, nineteen, nineteen is already covered.
Right.
Twenty, no. Twenty-one, no. Twenty-two, no. Twenty-three, absolutely, yes. And uh. And twenty. Five is already covered, so yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, on commit, uh. Mr. Short?
Yes.
Please scroll up to the top of them, and also Commissioner Wilson discussed the waiver. Where is that addressed?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, two different ways. Uh, in condition number one, development shall substantially comply with the approved site plan and development plan narrative. It's mentioned in the narrative. And it is also something that staff is able to waive at this point. If it meets certain findings within the. Uh, that are in the zoning ordinance. So, um. The entire, if if you look at the development plan for this project, the narrative describes that.
Okay. Okay, so there's number one. I'd like all the other commissioners to look at these while we're going through. Uh, three.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Wilson.
Quick question for Mr. Short. Um. Is it? Is it best practice to define all these conditions yet rely on the narrative from the applicant? As as part of this, it it just seems to me like a best practice would be. All the conditions and things that we're approving are clearly laid out in what what we are generating and what we are signing off on. As opposed to what they submitted. Um, recognizing I'm new and and I'm not trying to throw wrenches in the works.
Yeah, if there isn't something that, excuse me, is specifically spelled out. And there's also the fact that. That the zoning ordinance now allows staff to approve for paving waivers. What it says, what it says in the zoning ordinance is. If uh, if in general places around here are not paved. Then staff can approve a paving waiver. And if you look at the campground next door, not paved. You look at some, you know, the general area, it's not paved. There are obviously commercial developments around that are paid. So I think in that case. Uh, rather than put everything down in the conditions, we do rely on the narrative somewhat. But if we want to add something that's not in the narrative, change something that's not in the narrative. Um, add some more specification, then we put them in the conditions.
I I guess because they specifically requested a paving waiver in their document. Um, it it seems like we should address that and not leave it up to later staff decisions. Um, they didn't want to, they wanted us to answer that question here this evening, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think that's that's probably based on something. Uh, you know, because paving waivers were issued by the commission quite a bit and conditional use permits, but we can add that right here if you'd like.
And number two, okay, making a separate, put it in there and let's let the commissioners look at this.
And you also note that. Right here in condition number five, it does describe the type of uh, the type of a broad roadways that would be. Installed.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let me say, okay, hold on, I am. Okay, so I'm on four is fine, five is fine. Okay, can you move up to six and forward and then, okay? Okay. Okay, can you move up now from ten, please?
Sorry, Madam Chair, could we go back just a little bit, the transportation analysis?
Yeah, and the other thing that I'm wondering about is we've got in um. A fire protection and weed mitigation plan in number eleven.
Right.
Um, okay, let's go ahead and talk about number nine, and then we'll go to number eleven.
Right, is number nine even required because they're not using access off of Highway sixty-four?
Uh, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, the access on High Grove Road, the 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 Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT. Has uh, they do like to look at new developments that will impact. Different accesses onto this state facility, the highway. So the access onto High Grove Road would also apply in this case. Uh, so this is just to make sure that, I mean, they they will likely require an encroachment permit for this. For example. Um, the campground next door. The Clear Skies campground, it required, it required a TIA and an encroachment permit to High Grove Road. Although it actually accessed, I mean, I'm sorry, High Grove Road to uh, the state facility to the highway. Although its access was basically to a private road, it still impacts that highway, that intersection right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now can you move to number eleven, please, Mr. Short? Okay, so the applicant shall contract with High Country Fire to provide EMT. A fire protection and weed mitigation plan meeting the standards should be submitted. Okay, so that weed mitigation plan, that is in conjunction with the fire protection plan. So it's not duplicating here?
It is to some extent. Uh, but it's it's part of the fire protection plan as well, but. As we have said, in condition number one, it does indicate that they'll meet all landscape standards of this zone. So, uh, but this this does spell that out a little bit more. Uh, if the commissioner wants to remove it, you certainly can.
Okay, so if we're trying to clean things up here. You know, we're going to be going back through. We can leave the oven. I would be okay with modifying it to clean it up. Um, let's let's go ahead and move uh, to twelve. Um, do we have anything about fencing up above? I'm sorry, it's getting late. It's actually past my bedtime right now. You guys are thinking I'm kidding you, but I'm not.
All of our bedtimes, uh, so.
And I don't, I don't do my best work right now. So that's how come on. It was there something about fencing up in the, in any of the previous conditions, Mr. Short?
Yes, that was removed right here. So we, that was removed. Basically, it said, this says if you. Are putting in fencing, it has to be wildlife friendly. This condition. Uh, from Commissioner Best indicates that you will put in fencing, which is probably a good idea since uh. There is private property around it, uh, but that it would be. Wildlife-friendly fencing will be installed.
And uh, Madam, Madam Chair, this is just, um, the site plan. Uh, indicates, clearly indicates on the face of the site plan that they that they will install wildlife-friendly fencing. And they will be required to develop in substantial conformance with their site plan.
Got it, okay. Okay, can you continue up from number, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson?
Madam Chair, on item number thirteen, that's actually covered in existing condition number one, which. Requires them to comply with the landscape plan, which we mentioned earlier includes dust mitigation.
Okay. So. We can remove thirteen. Okay, so now, um. So if you kick that out, fourteen now becomes thirteen.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of change in numbering here.
Okay, okay, gotcha, um. Okay, so here we are with number seventeen. Can you go up, scroll up? Bob, or no, I, the other way. So we've got applicant shall consult with nearby public land managers concerning off-site impacts. Oh, there we go. There's the rest of it. Okay. Alright, can you continue scrolling up, please, to the next numbers? All those are off. Uh, okay, those are appropriate to be off. Okay, keep going all the way now to the end of the conditions. Okay, alright, so on Commissioner Best, your hand is raised. Did, is it just remained raised? Or did you have something else?
No, I I'm doing better with the remain raised thing. I'm getting better. Even though it's, even though it's late.
Right.
Uh. I would still like to move those structures on to the west side of the. Circular road. There's there's room to do it. They could go up to the north there. And I just think it would look a lot cleaner as you're coming down the highway. If that whole area are heavily landscaped and you weren't looking at either a car sitting there or the back or side of a structure. Um, and and there's a spot on the north. I'm looking at the map. Yeah, there's a spot right in the middle of the. Uh, the north right there where they could go. I mean, you can find a place to put them. I don't think it'd be too egregious for the applicant.
Should I add that condition? I can do it on number two.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson had talked about on. Like changing the the way it was placed on the property.
That's, that's a possibility and it would maybe be better, but why not just get them out of there and, and put them on the other side of, you know, just let that whole wide strip there. Then, there's nothing you can do to those little houses to make them look particularly, I mean, they, they're cool. I would like to have one of them in my backyard, don't get me wrong, but. I mean, we're trying to protect a gateway and a scenic highway and a tiny home. Doesn't do it for me. I, and since there's someplace you can move them, you can figure out how to get them in somewhere. Uh, I don't think you have to reduce the number. Uh, I would suggest that we do it, so, but I'm just.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, yeah, I would suggest that by rotating them ninety degrees, um, that gives you. Plenty of space then to add some pretty significant landscaping between them and the road, which has already got quite a setback there. Um, and that's the only two on the entire frontage of this entire, um, parcel. So. To only have two potentially visible but heavily landscaped homes. Um, across a frontage that's, you know, several hundred feet here, to me, I. Not sure that that's a, a necessary change here. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Scott, I do see your hand raised, um. Things are a little out of order, but I would like to hear your comments on that, if you would please.
Yeah, no, sorry. And I thought earlier you were mentioning the applicant would have a comment about the new conditions. So if that's not the case, because I just wasn't asked before.
Uh, yes, I did want to know, actually, when you were given, when, at the applicant's time, I did want to know if you did. Read the conditions and if you did approve them.
Fair enough, yeah, yeah. So, so the newer ones that came in, honestly, we support the opinions, Commissioner Best. The, the two for me is, is really, the fire extinguisher, one, I, I would like to be excused, there's actually a fire station on the property. Um, and so would really appreciate that, that piece.
I certainly agree with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're not building an ATV park here either. I understand the concerns and we support it, so thank you.
Um, okay, let's get, okay, so we're going to be removing number twelve. Okay, and Mr. Scott, you did say that you had two of them. What was the other one?
I'm happy to accept the rest of them. No, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay, and you've heard the comments about, um, kind of rotating the two tiny homes that are going to be on sixty-four frontage, basically. I believe before you indicated you were okay with that.
Ye- yes, I mean, I would, I would just ask, I understand both points and if we could just have the option of doing one or the other, I'd really appreciate it. And, and we'll take some time and look into it and that would be great.
Okay.
Either moving or, or adjusting the, the. You know, how they look so they look better for the street where they are. Thank you.
Right, and as far as removing, it would be more, um, I guess, moving?
Yeah, yes, and all the, the redesign, absolutely. But yeah, if, if we could have the option to either shift them in the site plan or. Or shift them as Commissioner Wilson said, that would be great and happy to comply.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Short, if you could, yeah, get some verbiage up there for us.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Jess with staff. Um, I, I think to, to get to the intent of, um, Commissioner Best's. Uh, concern, I think maybe what we would add in there. Um, when I zoom in on my big screen here and, and look really close, there is no landscaping. To the west of those two tiny homes. So I think maybe with this additional condition that Bob's putting in here. That, um, that if those, um, that they be relocated. Or rotated to provide more room for landscaping and landscaping be provided to the west of those tiny homes. So in, in other words, that we would have consistent landscaping along that entire frontage without a gap. And Commissioner Best, I, I would certainly welcome if, if you feel that you kind of meets the intent of, of what you're looking for in. In visual screening and, and protecting that frontage as the gateway.
I, I would prefer to have them moved and, you know, if we were in Wisconsin, that would be one thing, but I don't have. I, I think landscaping is going to be very difficult. Number one, it's, it's a desiccated. Tough place to landscape. We've been through this before out there. And number two, they're hauling water. Uh, the only thing that's going to survive out there is junipers and they grow an inch a year. I, I would rather see those things, like, move someplace else. There's plenty of room on the property. And, uh. That would be my opinion of other, other commissioners weigh in here. We got two ideas, so.
Well, um, the applicant has asked that he be given the choice. And when it comes down, when it comes down to it. He's going to have to make it look good. And at that point, he may say, you know what, I'm just going to move it. Or I'm going to do what's required here, but I think that by giving him the choice, I'm personally comfortable with it. I, I, I am, I am comfortable with the applicant having the option to do one of two things because either one. Are going to accomplish what this commission is trying to do, which is to. Have a nice gateway. That, that's my opinion, but we, we can certainly, uh.
Well, it's, it's, it's late and I, I don't, I'm going to spend too much time on it. Can you guys hear me? I just lost my, something happened to my Zoom.
Yeah, we can hear you.
That's interesting. I, I lost my screen, but I. I can't see anything. Uh, okay, uh, I don't want to beat it to death. My opinion is move them. If other commissioners have an, uh, an opinion, throw it in. If not, uh, that's my opinion. I would move them.
Okay, uh, you know what? I, I agree. I, it's my opinion that, that the applicant has, um. Indicated that it's going to be a nice-looking development, on. He's obviously put a lot of work into this. We have pictures of what it's going to look like. I, I can't see him trashing it, but he's not going to be able to. Because it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be done. There's a landscaping planning that's going to have to look a certain way. I personally, on, and would like to give the applicant what he's asking for and say, hey, you've got a choice. You can either move them. Or make it look good with landscaping. You decide what you want to do. That, that's where I'm at on this. On Commissioner Ruggles.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree with you on that. The other thing is that, uh, how much? Would moving those two, um. Tiny homes benefit people passing by in terms of what they see. The road is already elevated relative to that, um, portion of the property. Uh, so, uh. When you go by, you're simply going to see. Other homes that are to the east of that. And I don't think that, uh, I think it should be left up to the applicant as to how to do it. Because in my opinion, you're not going to, uh, improve the visual appearance a great deal. By saying, no, you can't put them there.
This, this is Chair Aunt Taveris and, um. I agree. I really don't think in the grand scheme of things, they're going to be driving, see what's the posted speed limit, sixty-five, so they'll be going seventy-five. And I don't really think it's going to, I, I, I just don't think it's going to make that much difference. It's going to look good one way or the other. And, um. So why don't we just let the applicant, let's let the applicant make the choice on this one. And so that, so number two, on. I believe number two accomplishes what the commission is trying to do, on. Let's see, uh, Mr. Scott, your hand is still raised. Did you just forget to put it down or do you have something else?
Yes, I did. Thanks for your help. I'll put it down. Appreciate it.
Okay, okay, you're good. Thank you. Or you do have something else? No, we're good. All right. Um, I think that we have gone through these conditions carefully, one by one. And I think we are now ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Uh, and that we recommend approval of ZC dash two-three dash zero-zero-one. Um, with the mo- latest modification of conditions. As here on the screen.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Ruggles. To recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC two-three dash zero-zero-one. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. I also vote aye. ZC twenty-three zero-zero-one will be moving forward to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. With the modified conditions as, um, on the, stated on the screen now. The final item, uh, because we do not need to move to a continuation of the study session. Is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this, this commission this evening for items? Not on the agenda. Not seeing any? My clock shows nine thirty-three PM and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good night, all.
Good night.
Take care.